Today is Tuesday, July 18th, 2006, and we are meeting here in John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. Welcome to members of the public and our viewing audience on Channel 35 where we are broadcast for each meeting, which is Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, 10 o'clock each week. The first Friday of the month, we meet in Van Nuys City Hall. Besides being broadcast live on Channel 35, we are rebroadcast in the evening, and we are also webcast through our city's homepage at lacity.org, where there's a wealth of information about your government and about the city departments and elected officials here in Los Angeles. Lastly, you can call council phone to listen via telephone to our council meetings and our committee meetings, and that's at 213-621-CITY. We invite public testimony here at City Hall. We also invite public testimony through our remote facilities at Van Nuys City Hall, where we are able to watch you via remote and listen to your public comment as well. With that, Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Cardiness Gru, Han, Luisa Labange, Padilla Parks, Perry Reyes, Rosanelle Smith, Wyss Weston, Zain Garcia, ten members present and a four, Mr. President.
If I could ask our sergeants-at-arms to please assist and bring a little order to the chambers, and if I can ask everybody to rise, first order of business in the beginning of the week is for a salute to the flag. Mr. Labange, welcome back, and we ask you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
We just returned from our nation's capital. I ask we all to rise. We can all rise, please, for this country. Sergeants, we ask our guests to rise. Thank you. And place your hand over your heart, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Labange moves, and Mr. Cardiness seconds. If there's no objection, those will be unanimously approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Zain moves, and Mr. Weston seconds. If there's no objection, those two will be unanimously approved.
Mr. President, this is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay, we now have time for 10 minutes of general public comment. I'd like to invite Sylvia Hawkins for a minute first to speak, to be filed by Armando Herman.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Sylvia Hawkins. To our council board, concerning all Lotto tickets, machines, users, must be aware how they are removing United States of America money out of all banks from state to state without you opening your account. Once the strip on the Lotto ticket is clipped with the red strip on these machines, they are faking with the strip on back of your California driver's license of all 50 states. And now at any ATM machine, they can remove money out of your account. We are asking all, how called eight military and eight states that is coming to United States of America, please don't use any cards or banks any longer as we proceed on in this deeper attack from submarines, water attack, pellet bombing from the landing Pacific onto the land.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Armando Herman is our next speaker. Welcome, sir.
Good morning. I'd like to bring to the attention of Jose Weisar's office and to yourself, Mr. Garcia, that the problem with blight continues in the area of the cities or throughout our cities, and it's a darn shame. I would like for you to hear this, Mr. Garcia, because it has to do apart with you.
Chairman, this is Bill Jean calling from the office of Council President Eric Garcia. Just calling to let you know that I kind of spoke to our chief of staff, and he did say that you can also call 311 if you have any problems with, like, bumpy item, or graffiti, or potholes, you know, they can refer you to the correct department, and you can go straight to the department. So if you have any questions, go ahead and call 311.
I would like to remind council that it's very inappropriate when the services of the city do not provide for the people of Los Angeles, and we demand, because you're raising our taxes, that you act upon our demands. It's a shame when council spends money ridiculously for their own lavish desires. And I've been here before, and I spoke about it, but the one biggest problem now, before I step away, because I'm not leaving, and I'm going to attend to your offices, is this.
We'll have somebody come and talk to you. Don't worry, we'll make sure. Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Hunt. One once, go on twice. Matt Dowd.
I think you should stop both clocks, too, when people aren't at the mic to give a fair 10 minutes. Just want to show something that I shot on Venice Beach yesterday. It's a video. Wait a minute.
Bring John Mack out here. Bring him out here. Bring Maxine Waters out here. Bring the whole damn congregation of the justice system and the police commissioner out here. I'll talk to them. My name is Kwanzaa. I'll talk to you about the treatment, the bad treatment, and the misuse of human citizens that this lottery is abusing. I'll say that. I'm not afraid to talk. I've been talking, but bring them here. Let them come out here and experience this discrimination and this illegal damn scam, because that's what it is, a scam. And they're perpetuating it as a legal, fair system. It is not. It's a scam.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Appreciate your testimony today. Sky Anderson is our next speaker. Sky Anderson, please.
I'm Sky Anderson. The public comment used to get two minutes, now we get one. I've got a very serious thing to talk about, and I can't do it in one minute. But Mr. Parks is engaged in a revenge bandwagon, and Mr. Garcia just joined that revenge bandwagon. Mr. Parks was dismissed as the head of the police department by Mr. Han, who I consider a hero, because he put public safety ahead of his career, and Mr. Parks ran against him as mayor and turned the black community against him, and because of that, he lost. I live in a safe neighborhood now under Mr. Parks. It was dangerous. There was drug dealing, there was drug shooting up, there was prostitution, it's not that way anymore. Bottom seems to be that Mr. Bratton says that he wants to hire people who've used drugs. If you ever go to a recovery meeting of drug addicts, they talk about how in high school, everyone used drugs. Seventy-one years ago, there were two people in our prominent recovery program that are millions all over the world. You're going to stigmatize these people who corrected themselves? Mr. Parks doesn't deserve any attention from Mr. Han. He was right, saying they don't know what they're talking about. Mr. Garcia, you don't know what you're talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. We appreciate your comments, and we're trying to get to as many people in 10 minutes as we can, so that's why we have on one minute now. Ahmad Jamal is our next speaker. Don't worry, we'll get 10 minutes.
Once again, I stand before you as a supporter of the South Central Farmers, trying to appeal to each and every member of this council to look into your charter and your rulebooks and do whatever you can to fix this injustice. It's not too late for the members of this council to amend this monumental failure. As of this week, the months-long encampment at the farm will come to a close, but our fight will continue on. After today in Superior Court Department 18, the first part of our legal battle will come to an end. Win or lose, our fight will continue. I stand here before you as a supporter of the South Central Farmers, and as long as the Campesinos and Campesinas are struggling to regain the rightful place on that land, myself and many others just like me will continue to fight on. So I urge you to take into consideration what's best for the people who live in a historically impoverished community. Another warehouse adding to the pollution in the most polluted part of the city or a green space where parents can teach their children to be self-sufficient. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jamal. Appreciate your comments. David Zapata is our next speaker. David Zapata, welcome.
Hello, my name is David Zapata, and I come here today to ask City Council a question. If I can have your attention, please. Earlier, you asked me to stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance, but I ask you this: How can a young individual from the impoverished neighborhoods stand up for something he does not believe in? Because his state, his city, cannot show him democracy. I come where young individuals, younger than myself, carry guns and use drugs. I ask you, and Jan Perry, Ninth District woman, whose district has been the same for my whole life, I ask you, can you help us? Stop talking amongst each other and listen, please. I ask for your help. Our people are starving, and I'm here to support the farmers, the one place where, you know, people could get decent food for very little.
Thank you, Mr. Zapata. Appreciate your testimony. Melrose Larry Green is our next speaker.
Good morning. I realize I only have one minute, so I'd like to devote a few seconds of my one minute to the farmers. I sympathize with the young people. I don't need any applause. The city can do something to ameliorate this situation. They can do something, and I'd like to see something done, because they don't understand eminent domain, and they don't understand Ralph Horowitz and millions of dollars. It's their farm, and I understand their point of view. I came here to talk about Bill Bratton. We are very lucky to have Bill Bratton as a police chief. I wish the city council would take a stand on something critical, like developing and brokering a peace plan and advising the president and the senate and the House of Representatives to broker a peace plan in the Middle East. Bill Bratton may have said a few inappropriate words, but his actions speak for themselves as a great police chief, and I appreciate what you did in the letter you wrote, and I know, but don't you liberals like to support freedom of speech? Right, President Garcia? So I hope all you that didn't jump on the bandwagon, don't, because that bandwagon is going no place. Thank God for Bill Bratton. I'm out of time. I'm Melrose Larry Green.
Our next speaker is Zuma Dog.
Yeah, yeah, you got Zuma Dog, and I'd like to make your announcement. We got Eric Spelman from KTLA, number five, watching right now. Zuma Dog is running for city council, because we got corruption running rampant through these chambers, y'all, and Zuma Dog's gonna be straightening it out. We're gonna be holding a press conference. Zuma Dog will be heading agenda items and putting my positions on them during recess, during the agenda. Meet me out right here, and I'll be having a press conference. It's Zuma Brockovich, y'all. That ain't supposed to be the case. We got everything in L.A. is about real estate development. If you notice, they're trying to get the artists off Venice Beach at the same time they're trying to kick out the senior citizens at Lincoln Place. They're doing the same thing at Echo Park. You got the South Central Farmers, they decide to evacuate everybody at the same time, because it's all about real estate development. They got the cement trucks ready to roll, y'all. That's what it's all about. But when you displace all these people that you're gonna throw out in the streets, you better tell Arnold Schwarzenegger to call the National Guard, y'all, because you're gonna have a wave of homelessness, y'all, that's gonna hit the streets of L.A. like a tsunami, y'all, because I'm three or four steps ahead of y'all, and you know that, but the campaign contributions are already in, the cement trucks are already ready to roll, and I'd also like to say I support Chief Bratton in this beef. It's a gang beef, like a gang violence. You got beef between L.A. City Council and the police.
Thank you, Mr. Dog.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, Armando Herman is our next speaker. Welcome, sir.
Good morning. I'd like to bring to the attention of Jose Wezar's office and to yourself, Mr. Garcetti, that the problem with blight continues in the area of the cities or throughout our cities, and it's a darn shame. I would like for you to hear this, Mr. Garcetti, because it has to do part with you.
Chairman, this is Bill Jean calling from the office of Council President Eric Garcetti. Just calling to let you know that I kind of spoke to our chief of staff, and he did say that you can also call 311 if you have any problems with, like, bumpy item, or graffiti, or potholes, you know, they can refer you to the correct department, and you can go straight to the department. So if you have any questions, go ahead and call 311. Thank you.
I would like to remind council that it's very inappropriate when the services of the city do not provide for the people of Los Angeles, and we demand, because you're raising our taxes, that you act upon our demands. It's a shame when council spends money ridiculously for their own lavish desires. And I've been here before.
I can ask you to conclude, sir.
And I spoke about it. But the one biggest problem now, before I step away, because I'm not leaving, and I'm going to attend to your offices, is this.
We'll have somebody come and talk to you, don't worry, we'll make sure. Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Hunt. Go on once, go on twice. Matt Dowd.
I think you should stop both clocks, too, when people aren't at the mic, to give a fair 10 minutes. Just want to show something that I shot on Venice Beach yesterday. It's a video. Wait a minute.
Bring John Mack out here. Bring him out here. Bring Maxine Waters out here. Bring the whole damn congregation of the justice system and the police commissioner out here. I'll talk to them. My name is Kwanzaa. I'll talk to you about the treatment, the bad treatment, and the misuse of human citizens that this lottery is abusing. I'll say that. I'm not afraid to talk. I've been talking. But bring them here. Let them come out here and experience this discrimination and this illegal damn scam, because that's what it is, a scam. And they're perpetuating it as a legal, fair system. It is not. It's a scam.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. We appreciate your testimony today. Sky Anderson is our next speaker. Sky Anderson, please.
I'm Sky Anderson. The public comment used to get two minutes, now we get one. I've got a very serious thing to talk about, and I can't do it in one minute. But Mr. Parks is engaged in a revenge bandwagon, and Mr. Garcetti just joined that revenge bandwagon. Mr. Parks was dismissed as the head of the police department by Mr. Hahn, who I consider a hero, because he put public safety ahead of his career. And Mr. Parks ran against him as mayor and turned the black community against him, and because of that, he lost. I live in a safe neighborhood now under Mr. Parks. It was dangerous. There was drug dealing, there was drug shooting up, there was prostitution, it's not that way anymore. The bottom seems to be that Mr. Bratton says that he wants to hire people who've used drugs. If you ever go to a recovery meeting of drug addicts, they talk about how in high school everyone used drugs. Seventy-one years ago, there were two people in our prominent recovery program that are millions all over the world. You're going to stigmatize these people who corrected themselves? Mr. Parks doesn't deserve any attention from Mr. Hahn. He was right, saying they don't know what they're talking about. Mr. Garcetti, you don't know what you're talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. We appreciate your comments, and we're trying to get to as many people in 10 minutes as we can, so that's why we have on one minute now. Ahmad Jamal is our next speaker. Don't worry, we'll get 10 minutes.
Once again, I stand before you as a supporter of the South Central Farmers, trying to appeal to each and every member of this council to look into your charter and your rulebooks and do whatever you can to fix this injustice. It's not too late for the members of this council to amend this monumental failure. As of this week, the months-long encampment at the farm will come to a close, but our fight will continue on. After today and Superior Court Department 18, the first part of our legal battle will come to an end. Win or lose, our fight will continue. I stand here before you as a supporter of the South Central Farmers, and as long as the Campesinos and Campesinas are struggling to regain the rightful place on that land, myself and many others just like me will continue to fight on. So I urge you to take into consideration what's best for the people who live in a historically impoverished community. Another warehouse adding to the pollution in the most polluted part of the city, or a green space where parents can teach their children to be self-sufficient. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jamal. Appreciate your comments. David Zapata is our next speaker. David Zapata, welcome.
Hello, my name is David Zapata, and I come here today to ask City Council a question. If I can have your attention, please. Earlier, you asked me to stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance, but I ask you this: How can a young individual from the impoverished neighborhoods stand up for something he does not believe in? Because his state, his city cannot show him democracy. I come where young individuals, younger than myself, carry guns and use drugs. I ask you, and Jan Perry, Ninth District woman, whose district has been the same for my whole life, I ask you, can you help us? Stop, stop talking amongst each other and listen, please. I ask for your help. Our people are starving, and I'm here to support the farmers. The one place where, you know, people could get decent food for very little.
Thank you, Mr. Zapata. Appreciate your testimony. Melrose Larry Green is our next speaker.
Good morning. I realize I only have one minute, so I'd like to devote a few seconds of my one minute to the farmers. I sympathize with the young people. I don't need any applause. The city can do something to ameliorate this situation. They can do something, and I'd like to see something done, because they don't understand eminent domain, and they don't understand Ralph Horowitz and millions of dollars. It's their farm, and I understand their point of view. I came here to talk about Bill Bratton. We are very lucky to have Bill Bratton as a police chief. I wish the City Council would take a stand on something critical, like developing and brokering a peace plan, and advising the President and the Senate and the House of Representatives to broker a peace plan in the Middle East. Bill Bratton may have said a few inappropriate words, but his actions speak for themselves as a great police chief. And I appreciate what you did and the letter you wrote, and I know, but don't you liberals like to support freedom of speech? Right, President Garcetti? So I hope all you that didn't jump on the bandwagon, don't, because that bandwagon is going no place. Thank God for Bill Bratton. I'm out of time. I'm Melrose Larry Green.
Our next speaker is Zuma Dog.
Yeah, yeah, you got Zuma Dog, and I'd like to make your announcement. We got Eric Spelman from KTLA, number five, watching right now. Zuma Dog is running for City Council, because we got corruption running rampant through these chambers, y'all, and Zuma Dog's gonna be straightening it out. We're gonna be holding a press conference. Zuma Dog will be heading agenda items and putting my positions on them during recess, during the agenda. Meet me out right here, and I'll be having a press conference. It's Zuma Brockovich, y'all. That ain't supposed to be the case. We got, everything in L.A. is about real estate development. If you notice, they're trying to get the artists off Venice Beach. At the same time, they're trying to kick out the senior citizens of Lincoln Place. They're doing the same thing at Echo Park. You got the South Central Farmers, they decide to evacuate everybody at the same time, because it's all about real estate development. They got the cement trucks ready to roll, y'all. That's what it's all about. But when you displace all these people that you're gonna throw out in the streets, you better tell Arnold Schwarzenegger to call the National Guard, y'all, because you're gonna have a wave of homelessness, y'all, that's gonna hit the streets of L.A. like a tsunami, y'all, because I'm three or four steps ahead of y'all, and you know that. But the campaign contributions are already in, the cement trucks are already ready to roll, and I'd also like to say I support Chief Bratton in this beef. It's a gang beef, like a gang violence. You got beef between L.A. City Council and the police.
Thank you, Mr. Dog. We appreciate your comments. Our next speaker is Amanda, our last speaker is Amanda, excuse me if I didn't, Rosate? Is it Amanda Rosate? Or Amanda Rosate? Is there an Amanda who filled out a public speaker card who's here? Going once. Is that you, ma'am? Excuse me for mispronouncing it. Couldn't quite read the writing here. Could you state your name for the record, please?
Amanda Rosetti.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
I just want to thank all the supporters, you know, here from South Central and from out the world, supporting us through this struggle, and, you know, it will continue regardless on court decisions. And, you know, we're for the people, stand by the people. It's more than just talk. It's about time we stand and, you know, we do something. We want our support, we need yours. You know, the time is now, before it gets out of hand and before, you know, there's no more green left. So everyone has a power to do something, let's take advantage of that. We need your help now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Amanda. Appreciate your testimony today. That closes our general public comment for today. Madam Clerk, if you can please go through the agenda.
First item on the agenda, Mr. President, item number one is an item noticed for public hearing. It's an ordinance, Chesapeake District Business Improvement District.
Okay. Does anybody wishes to be heard on that who's here today? If not, we will open and close that hearing. Does anybody wish to call this special? If not, let's open the roll on one, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That's approved. Next items.
And the ordinance will go over for one week.
Okay, that's right.
Next items, two and three are also public hearing items, and the recommendation for council actually would be to open the hearings and continue the hearings and ordinances to August 8th.
Okay. If there's no objection, we will open the hearings and continue the ordinance to August 8th on those two. Next items?
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items four through 21. A report has been submitted on item number 21, and on 18 and 19, the committee met on those this morning, and the reports are not ready yet, and there was a request to hold those on the desk for the reports.
On which item?
18 and 19.
Okay. We'll hold those on the desk, 18 and 19. Anybody wishing to call any of these items special? We have items 21, Mr. Zine.
Four.
Number four. Gruel slash Labons. We have cards on a number, but we've held public hearing on that, so it would require a motion, just to let people know, on four, six, eight, nine, 12, and 20. Any other specials, colleagues? Seeing none, on the balance, can we please open the roll? Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is, those are approved. Next items, please. Or can we send 15? I'm sorry if there's no objection forthwith.
And also, on the ordinances, those go over for one week.
Correct. We will, since we don't have 12 members, per council rules, those will be carried over one week. Next items?
Next items, Mr. President, 22 through 53 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Colleagues, any specials from the items before us right now, 22 through 53? Do you have any specials? 22 through 53? All right. We do not have any speaker cards on those as well, so if there are no specials, we will open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
The ordinances will go over a week, and the others are approved. Next items, please. Yes.
Item 37, forthwith.
If there's no objection, we will send 37 forthwith, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you.
Okay. Next items, please.
Next items on the supplemental agenda, items 54 and 55 are items for which public hearings have been held. On 54, there is, there are majority and minority reports. Do you wish to hold those on the desk? Our motion is required.
Let's hold 54 on the desk. 55, anybody wishing to call that special? If not, let's prepare the roll on 55 and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 56 through 62.
Okay. I'll call 59 special. Any other specials, colleagues? 56 through 58 and 60 through 62.
58, please.
58. Mr. Wezar? Other specials, colleagues? Any specials? Go on once. Go on twice. Let's prepare the roll on the balance and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved, except the ordinances, which will go over one week. Next items?
That would take council back to the items called special. 18 and 19 are being held on the desk. The first item then would be, excuse me, number four.
Okay.
That was called special by Ms. Gruel and Mr. Lunch.
Okay. Ms. Gruel and Mr. Labons, we have number four. Ms. Gruel, if you'd like to begin our comments on that.
Thank you, and I will be brief. I wanted to highlight, colleagues, this is the film, a fee waiver for city facilities. As we all know, film and media production in Los Angeles is our signature industry, but we have faced over the last several years with other cities luring production away from us. I always say that we would not let, that New York would not let Wall Street leave New York, and we need to stand up and say, we're not going to let Hollywood be lured away from us here in Los Angeles. Waiving production fees is part of our efforts and my efforts to ensure that we keep production companies from fleeing in search of lower production costs. We see New York City offering and the state of New York numerous tax incentives and programs, ease of doing business, and we have to be competitive in that. We, as a council, went on record supporting AB 777, which is in the state legislature, which would support providing some tax incentives to keep those jobs here. The jobs are not just in front of the camera, but they're behind the camera, and they're all the ancillary services that we see, so many of our individuals in our communities that are employed by the entertainment industry. We also took a position in the city, providing tax relief for some of those production companies. And I believe that we have to do everything we can to keep filming here in Los Angeles and keep Los Angeles more attractive to these production companies. I believe very strongly that the health of our economy depends on it. The industry here employs nearly 80,000 workers and injects $31 billion into the local economy. You'll see before us, there were a couple of exemptions for particular facilities that people felt were important to still charge for some filming, but what we're doing is sending a message that we want filming here in Los Angeles. So I would ask for an aye vote on item number four. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Labons is our next speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. President and Ms. Gruel. Thank you. Mr. McDonald from Film LA, if you could just come to the center table and hold my time and just give a quick frame of the film industry in Southern California.
Thank you, Councilman Labons. Steve McDonald, President of Film LA. Just to echo Councilwoman Gruel's comments, this is a very important symbolic gesture. We are really under attack at the present time by 28 other states that have targeted tax incentives to lure production companies to their region. And it is very common that other states and cities that we compete with offer free city government-owned facilities for use for filming. So this is a very common, routinely given benefit, and it's a start and a symbolic gesture, which I think is important. The thing to keep in mind is that the city will still be able to have a full cost recovery. All personnel fees will still be continued to pay, be paid by the industry, so it's a full cost recovery. This is simply the use fees on taxpayer-owned facilities. There's a number of departments which were mentioned which are not going to be included in this, all three proprietary departments at this point, as well as Alvera Street, Convention Center, and Wreckin' Parks. So I urge your support for this. It's an important job retention strategy.
Well, thank you very much. Members, I had a little fight with Water Brothers there, because they were going to Australia to film Superman, and as all of you may know, Madam City Clerk, that this original Superman was filmed in the backdrop of this city hall. It's a little disappointing that they went there, but hopefully with this kind of incentive, we could have that come back. And films made, as Ms. Gruel spoke of, the people who work not on just in front of the camera, but behind the camera, the 250,000 Southern Californians, the hundreds of thousands of Angelitos who work, will see this as an opportunity to follow up and film in Los Angeles and use it as an incentive. Because as the great Abe Stein said a producer years ago, "A rock's a rock, a tree's a tree, go shoot it in Griffith Park." And with that in mind, with protecting the park and those who walk dogs in the park, we encourage filming in Griffith Park and other places as well. Thank you, Mr. President. I urge an aye vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lunch. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this motion, or this item, excuse me? If not, why don't we prepare the roll on this and tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
That is approved.
And the order goes over one week.
That's right. They'll come back to us in one week because of 11 members here today. Next items, please.
Next item, Mr. President, 18 and 19 are still on the desk, and number 21 was called special by Councilmember Zine.
Okay. 18, 19, are we still awaiting the report?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay. So number 21, Mr. Zine, is called special. Is Mr. Zine close by? Why don't we wait one second, and we'll find him? Okay. Why don't we wait on number 21 and go to the next item, please?
Next item then would be 54, and that was called special. There is a majority.
Can we go ahead to 58 first?
Okay, that was called special by Councilmember Wezar.
Okay. Mr. Wezar, we have number 58 before us. Number 58 we're gonna take up now? I think we'll wait on 54, and we'll wait on, we're waiting on 18, 19, and 21 right now. So, yeah, Mr. Reyes, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council President.
Hold on one second, Mr. Wezar. Go ahead, Mr. Reyes, did you have it?
I apologize. Council President, item number six, we can reconsider for public hearing, just to make sure we cover all our bases in terms of the process.
Okay. Why don't we do that, if that's okay, Mr. Wezar? We'll reconsider number six right now? Okay. Let's open the roll on reconsideration.
Just for a public hearing.
Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay. We now have two speaker cards on item number six. We have Matt Dowd, Mr. Dowd here. Go on once, go on twice, okay? And Zuma Dog, is Zuma Dog still here? Go on once, go on twice. If not, those are the two speaker cards, so we'll close the public hearing now. If we can, please prepare the roll on item six and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved, but will go over one week as an ordinance.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilman Wezar.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Wezar, we will take up item 58 now.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Is Mr. Deaton here? There he is. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Deaton. As you know, we took this item up last week, and there was a concern that we're gonna approve an amendment to this contract, given that, and we hadn't completed a performance audit review that was due. And so, this is up against today, and I just want to ask you, as the general manager, what comfort can you give, if any, to the council about this performance audit review, so that in the event we do go forward today, we're not putting the cart before the horse?
Well, two things. The city has agreed to do a certain amount on the lake between now and the end of this calendar year, and we need to complete that work, and we need to proceed with that work during that, during this period of time. The performance audit, we're going to have some preliminary information in the next month and final report in October. If at any point in the process, there is a, the audit reveals some sort of problem, then we have within the contract a 30-day cancellation clause. And this process was all but started by the Board of Water and Power Commissioners when they were concerned about the length of the contract and the amount of money. Rather than continue that contract for two years, after going through a process, they've continued it through December 31st of this year in order to complete our work. If there's a problem that is uncovered, there is no indication whatsoever that there will be, but if there is, then we will come to both the Water and Power Commission and to the council and inform you of that information at that point in time. However, what we do need, in order to, unless there is such a problem, we need to continue the process in order to get the work done between now and the end of December, because we have committed as a city to do certain things. We need to fulfill that responsibility.
So our assurance is that there's a 30-day cancellation clause in that contract. Should the audit show something we're concerned about, you'll bring it to our attention immediately and
Absolutely.
Inform us of your action.
Absolutely.
And what's the cost containment strategy for the dust mitigation project? Being new on the council, when I raised this issue last week, I wasn't aware of the long history that this has and the promises, the, not the promises, but how much we were told as a council, how much this would cost, and it's gone up quite a bit since then. What's our cost containment strategy for this?
We're in the process right now with the Great Basins, looking at options and different alternatives we have. There's considerable legal activity on both sides, and we've chosen to try to mediate our differences and work out a plan in the future. As soon as we get a little further along on that, we'll be happy to brief the council. But the idea is, is to, within our responsibilities, to try to find the least cost and the least water utilization in order to accomplish the objectives required under the Clean Air Act.
And we're under negotiations now to expand by nine square miles our mitigation. Do we have any estimates as to how much that will cost us?
The, we're in mediation. We've signed confidentiality agreements. We're in a situation where we're trying to work through a series of issues, try to change the way we've approached it, that from the way we've done it up to this point. And we should have, we're meeting once or twice a week with them, both in the Owens Valley and in Los Angeles, back and forth. We'll have that information, hopefully in the next 30 to 60 days.
Okay, thank you. Finally, council members, I'm introducing a motion today that will ask the DWP present its audit findings within two weeks after it's completed to the Audits and Government Efficiency Committee, which I chair, and that the DWP report include an exit strategy, as well as a full accounting of all capital expenditures, and that the City Council get a briefing on the status of the negotiations between DWP and the Great Basin District regarding the proposed nine-square-mile expansion of the city's obligation vis-a-vis the dust mitigation program. I think many of us, as the conversation happened last week, are very interested in getting more information on this project, and that any proposed expenditures on this project be as transparent as possible and as close to the original estimate as possible. So we're looking forward to getting that information. I have no other concerns with this, and hopefully we could move on from here. We've gotten assurances from the general manager that the council will be told of any concerns in the performance audit, and we will hear that audit in my committee, in the Audits and Government Efficiency Committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Perry is our next speaker, to be followed by Mr. Cartness.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. What are the outcomes? If you could just review for me again, what are the outcomes if we don't approve this today?
Excuse me?
What's the ramifications if we extend the contract to wait for the audit? What's, basically, what's the downside to the department? Hold my time.
What we need to do is to, we have a legal commitment to complete certain projects by the end of December of this year. We have the first, the first 29 miles, square miles, to be completed. We are on the, hopefully, the construction's going on. This is a key contract in that process, and we, and to the extent that we can, we need to proceed as quickly and as efficiently as we can in order to meet the January 1st deadline. If we were to not proceed, we would be severely hampered in order, and I think we would be, it would be almost impossible for us to meet those deadlines. We would be facing the legal ramifications in the form of fines, et cetera, if we did not meet that deadline. Also, right now, I think that the good faith effort we're both the Great Basins and the Department is doing relative to mediation would be severely hampered if we blocked it proceeding. The, I think the council and the commission, both are very interested in finding out the results of the audit. If those results, as soon as those results are available, they're going to be given directly to myself and to the board simultaneously. There is no intent to hold that back in any fashion, and if they, if in fact that, excuse me, audit does have results that meets, means that we have to do something differently, then we will approach that once we have those findings. have to do something differently, then we will approach that once we have those findings.
Okay. Let me ask you a quick question, because I think we spoke about this the other day. The difference in time extending the contract versus waiting for the audit to come in is basically only a week. Maybe, let's... worst-case scenario, maybe two weeks. Tell me how the difference in time, which is a very narrow, narrow window, has... would have such a catastrophic impact on the process?
Well, the situation is, is that we have a preliminary response from the auditors and then a final audit in October, and we would be in the process of making deadlines to the contract, probably at least two of those by October. And then even in October, we'd only have the results. We wouldn't necessarily know what we want to do about them. And unless there's something very severe that comes out of those audits, we need to proceed to conclusion. And so, you can actually, on a calendar basis, by continuing the contract 30 days or 60 days, it doesn't appear to be a major detriment, but the amount of time it takes to make the... Go back through all the approval processes really puts us doing something I don't think is necessary. As long as we come to you, we have our 30-day cancellation clause. If there is a problem, we'll address it. The alternative is that we address the problem when we know there's a problem, as opposed to anticipating the problem, which we have no reason to anticipate.
Well, my objective was to keep the door open, because I felt that the conflict between or the opposition to extending the contract was basically very minimal, nearly inconsequential. And I had concerns about the independence of the audit, based on a comment that was set at the table on prior meeting, and...
Well, as far as the independence is concerned, the way the contract is drawn up is that the results of that go directly to the Board of Water and Power Commissions, which is, in essence, a Brown Act issue, a public document, and is available to anybody and everybody. If that document demonstrates there's a problem, or something in the meantime in the preliminary results that there is some problem, then we will address the problem. But if there isn't, I would strongly urge that we be able to proceed to conclusion on the project, which we need to do.
Is it within the nature of the process for you to make a report on the record on the preliminary audit?
Preliminary audit? Yeah, the preliminary audit will be also...
On the record?
On the record.
Okay, so maybe what we ought to do is have you come to committee on the preliminary audit?
Sure, be happy to.
Any more questions? Is that it? Okay, thank you. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Mr. Deaton. You don't smile as much these days as you did a few years ago, before you went over to the Department of Water and Power, but that's another matter, I presume. I don't think that's before you, so it'd be a violation of the Brown Act to discuss. It's not before you, but you have a lot of responsibilities over there, and you've inherited many, many responsibilities. This is one in particular that was actually... that came across the department, came across this council, and was agreed upon as a settlement, this mitigation, under another person who ran the Department of Water and Power some time ago. Unfortunately, our worst estimates seem to have come true, that this project has crossed the $400 million mark. We're in the latter stages. Approximately, how many more square miles do we have yet to cover, to finish our mitigation?
That, quite frankly, is a discussion that we're having now in mediation. There's different...
I mean, before that mediation, we have a figure. We have, what, 28.5 miles, square miles, or something like that?
29.5, something like that. And then there was an action by Great Basins for an additional eight to nine miles.
An action to an additional eight to nine miles?
Right. And that was not necessarily the final number. That was just what they... the next go-around that they... So, what we're trying to do in mediation is to get some better visibility for both sides and a better understanding of the cost and et cetera.
Well, with all due respect, in this decision by someone outside of the city, outside of the Department of Water and Power, to possibly require us to mitigate another nine square miles possibly out of an original just shy of 30 square miles? So, we're talking about an additional one-third. So, technically speaking, that could be an additional 100 and some million dollars of mitigation, potentially, correct?
Yes.
Who is on our side over there? Who are... who is up north? Who is... who are in these discussions outside of the Department of Water and Power that seems to favor the idea that maybe we ought to just kind of slow down on the aggressiveness of mitigation and maybe be a little bit more moderate about it?
Well, I'm in the discussions relative to...
But you represent the department, the city.
The city.
Outside of...
It's just between the city and Great Basins at this stage, and see if there is a way to mediate the differences.
But with all due respect, they're representing their interests, right? They're representing the community that somewhat feels aggrieved, the community that feels that mitigation is necessary, et cetera. They're not necessarily a third party that is just kind of hanging out. They feel like they have a vested interest, correct?
Well, I think their main thrust is that they, as most air districts, believe their primary responsibility is a public health issue relative to carrying out the Clean Air Act, and I think that's the context in which the discussion has to be held, is the requirements of the Clean Air Act. And what the attempt... My view is, is that we should comply at the lowest cost possible.
Now, what I'm trying to get at is, when it comes to this mitigation, when they decide to mitigate another two square miles, another nine square miles, or another 10 or 20 square miles, who feels that responsibility? Who bears that responsibility? Who shares that responsibility financially?
The city.
The city.
Period.
Basically, the city of Los Angeles, slash, the Department of Water and Power.
Exactly.
Correct.
On the lake.
So...
There's other aspects of the dust in the region that are not relative to the lake. There are other sand dunes and issues that raise dust issues for certain other communities that are not on the lake, and those are not our responsibility. But as it relates to the lake right now, it's... Their view is that the lake is our responsibility.
Is it fair to say that the Department of Water and Power, when it comes to this particular mitigation and the decades of activity the department's had in that basin, it's not like people are really excited about our presence there? We're kind of... they're kind of dealing with us. Is that a fair characterization?
I think that's probably fair.
Okay, that's a nice way to put it, actually. But the reason why I say that is what it has... what my comments and my questions to you have to do with is, I think it's important that we continue until we find, or unless you let us know, or this audit, preliminary findings, and the final audit tell us that this particular company that we're contracting with, that they've actually done something that requires us to exercise the 30-day right for us to get them out of the contract and say goodbye, we don't want your services, and then go elsewhere, correct?
Definitely. And as I've stated earlier, thus far, there's no indication whatsoever that there is a problem. This... just because of the complexity and the controversy relative to the project and the amount of money spent, et cetera, there was a need to... On the Water Power Commission felt there was a need to take a look at, from a performance standpoint, what was the situation, and we're in the process of doing that.
Bottom line is, if we find that the performance is less than acceptable, we can and will exercise our right in the contract to excuse them...
Absolutely.
...within 30 days.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Seeing no other speakers on the queue, I didn't... Mr. Weezer want to close? There's no other speakers on the queue. Any... anything else? Okay, the item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes. Eleven ayes, items approved. Thank you. Next item.
Next item, Madam President, number 21 was called special by Councilmember Zein.
Mr. Zein.
Thank you, Madam President. On this matter, if we could have the folks come forward for this in the police department. This regards the racial profiling within the Los Angeles Police Department. And a report was done, we heard in Public Safety yesterday, and I didn't want to just pass it through without the individuals who... Analysis group that prepared the analysis and came up with the information to clarify whether we have what is alleged to be inappropriate police conduct on traffic stops and other stops in the city of Los Angeles. And I've got some notes, but if... We have some doctors here who are part of the research. If you'll just give us a review, basically what we discussed yesterday.
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity to present the results. My name is Elizabeth Becker. I'm with Analysis Group Incorporated. This is Dr. Michael Smith. He's with the University of South Carolina. And Dr. Alan Meister, who also is with Analysis Group. We were asked by the city to present a... To conduct some research to investigate the question as to whether there is evidence of racial bias in policing within the city of Los Angeles. And in particular, we're asked to conduct some research on post-stop outcomes, on the outcomes occurring after a stop has been made by a police officer. So, we were specifically interested in answering the question whether minorities are disproportionately subject to sanctions or to other burdens following a stop. That post-stop analysis was one of three different analyses that we had recommended to the city. We had also recommended an external benchmarking study of pedestrian stops and an internal benchmarking study. We have not conducted those studies and are reporting today just on the post-stop analysis. In preparation for conducting the analysis, we conducted a good bit of research to ensure that the work that we were doing was consistent with prior research that has been conducted. We conducted an extensive literature review, also looked at some work that had been in other jurisdictions, and presented the summary of that results in an earlier report that was filed in January 2005. In addition to that, we conducted a ride-along study with the LAPD officers to determine whether the race of drivers and whether the race of pedestrians and passengers in vehicles could reasonably be determined by the police officers.
Dr. Becker, if you'll... Madam President, can we have some quiet in here? It's difficult to hear the presentation with all the conversations.
Yes. If I could ask the sergeants to make sure that everyone is pleased, quiet in the chamber so we can hear the discussion.
The results of that ride-along study are also contained in our report in January 2005. The basic conclusion of that ride-along study was that it is, in fact, difficult for the race of drivers and passengers in vehicles to be determined, and if anyone is interested in reviewing that, that report is publicly available. We also revealed a large quantity of data that was available from the city in order to determine what kinds of information we could use to analyze post-stop outcomes. The outcomes that we specifically looked at are seven specific post-stop outcomes: arrests, citations, officer requests to exit the vehicle, pat downs or frisks, higher discretion searches, stops in which no action was taken, and officer requests for consent to search a vehicle. Just to give you some sense of the regularity with which these different outcomes occur, arrests are fairly infrequent, occurring about five to six percent of the time in stops. Citations are far and away the more... the most frequently occurring outcome as a result of a stop, occurring at about two-thirds of all stops. Officer requests to exit the vehicle and pat downs and frisks occur, generally speaking, less than 20% of the time, with the exception of a couple of specific divisions. And then, higher discretion searches, no action taken, and officer requests for consent to search are, in fact, quite rare outcomes occurring, generally speaking, less than 2% of the time. The methodology that we adopted was a statistical methodology, which allowed us to account for other factors that may have an influence on the stop, so that we could specifically focus on the impact that race might have, but with an understanding of the context in which the stop took place. Those statistical models accounted for a number of factors that could influence the behavior of officers in making different post-stop outcomes. The factors that we accounted for, generally speaking, fall into four categories. The nature of the encounter, such as the time of day, or the number of persons in a vehicle. We had a wealth of information available to us about the geographic area in which the stop occurred, demographic information, information on business activity, and information on crime rates. We also had information available to us and accounted for specific information about the officers: officer race, officer age, and the length of service or the experience that an officer brought to the situation. And then, in addition to knowing the race of the persons who were detained or the race of the suspects, we also had information on the age and the gender of the suspects as well. The factors that we chose for including in our analysis were each considered in light of the literature that we reviewed and considered in light of previous jurisdictional studies that had been done, and each had a theoretical basis for inclusion. Given... I mean, I think we feel like we have a very wide range of data available in order to understand the nature and the context of the stop, but there were some key data that were unavailable to us, that are not gathered or maintained by the department. Information such as suspect demeanor or the attitude of the persons who were stopped, the presence of bystanders, or expression of the wishes of the victims who were involved in the encounter were information that was not available to us and were not accounted for in any of the analyses that we conducted. The methodology that we adopted made distinctions between gang officers and non-gang officers. It was our observation that the outcomes of the stops varied significantly between gang officers and non-gang officers, so we looked at the gang officers separately. Each model was analyzed by a specific geographic area. For the non-gang officers, we were able to analyze the data at the division level. So, we have 18 divisions, and then the stops that were made specifically in LAX in the airport were analyzed separately. Gang officers made fewer stops, and so we were only able to disaggregate to the level of bureau for the gang officer analyses. And the time period of analysis covered all stops that were made from July 2003 through June 2004. A little bit over 800,000 stops were analyzed. What I'd like to do now is turn it over to Dr. Smith to present a summary of the results of the analyses.
Thank you. I think as an initial matter, it's important to understand that some of the racial disparities that are evident in the raw data that the LAPD has been collecting for several years and that are available publicly on the website, some of those... Many of those raw disparities, we were able to explain once we controlled for the large number of variables that we had available to us as part of the analysis. So, basically, what we're saying is that the inclusion of these control variables substantially reduced, or in some cases eliminated, the raw disparities that are evident in the data themselves. So, the take-home message there, I think, is that context matters in terms of understanding police behavior following a traffic stop. Secondly, there was... There were, for the seven outcomes that we analyzed, there were no consistent patterns of racial disparities across all racial groups or all geographic areas for... Basically, four out of the seven outcomes. So, arrests, citations, which Dr. Becker noted is the most frequently occurring outcome, no action taken or request for consent to search showed no consistent pattern of disparity citywide, within divisions. And so, it really did... it varied according to the racial category that you're examining, and it varied according to the different divisions. The most prevalent remaining disparities that we identified after controlling for the various things that we controlled for primarily had to do with three outcomes and were primarily centered in and amongst the non-gang officers. So, request to exit a vehicle, pat down frisks, and higher discretion searches all showed...
You could stop just one minute. If we could ask everyone again to be... please be quiet. Shhh. Thank you.
Those three outcomes all showed fairly significant disparities in... between minority citizens, blacks and Hispanics for the most part, and whites in most of the LAPD divisions. Those disparities in the outcomes for non-gang officers that I just mentioned were not as consistently observed for gang officers. So, request to exit a vehicle, pat down frisk, high discretion searches, for example, although there were some divisions... Excuse me, bureaus in this case, that showed disparities, those disparities were typically of smaller magnitude and were not as widespread as they were with the non-gang officers. Also, one of the things that we did for a number of the outcomes that we analyzed is we attempted to take account for the fact that some outcomes are largely outside of the control of the police. So, for example, arrests. If an officer knows that the suspect that he has stopped on the side of the road has a warrant out... the side of the road has a warrant out for that person's arrest, then it's, it's by law or by policy, in most cases, the officer will be required to make an arrest. So that's not, not a discretionary outcome. So for searches, arrests, citations, and request to exit vehicle, we attempted, we removed these, these lower discretion outcomes to see what would occur in the remaining higher discretion outcomes that, that were left. And basically what we found is that when you remove the low discretion outcomes, the kinds of things that the police really haven't, have, don't have much control over, the disparities were reduced in, in, in all of those cases, indicating that, that a lot of the disparity that you see in those four outcomes that are listed there are, that disparity is really centered in the low discretion outcomes that the police don't have a lot of control over. And finally, in terms of what does it all mean, what are the possible explanations for what we found? As Dr. Becker noted, there were, there were several variables that we would have liked to have had access to and to account for in our analyses that we did not because the data simply were not available or are of a type that would be, be very difficult to, to ever capture. Suspect attitude or demeanor is an important variable that we know from previous search predicts police outcomes. The presence of bystanders is another important variable that we didn't have. Victim preference in arrest situations is important. So in any kind of social science analysis like this, you always have this circumstance where you have imperfect information. You don't have all of the, the variables that in a perfect world you would like to have. And it's entirely possible that some of the remaining unexplained disparities that we've identified may in fact be explained had, had we had access to, to a more perfect set of data. Secondly, the, the outcomes for non-gang officers that showed the largest disparities, particularly request to exit a vehicle and a pat down frisk, have a lot to do with the perception of threat on the part of the police. They undertake these, these activities when they believe that the person that they're dealing with typically may be armed or, or dangerous or pose a threat to them. And so it, it's, it's pretty clear that for those outcomes, police officers perceive threat differently for different racial groups. And, and I think that has, at least is a partial explanation for some of the disparities that we saw in some of the outcomes. And finally, as we've noted several times now, there are these remaining unexplained disparities even after controlling for the host of variables that we controlled for. And so we cannot rule out the possibility that those remaining disparities are, are potentially the result of racially biased policing. So just in conclusion, let me sum up with what I think are the four most important points to, to keep in mind or findings that, that we came up with in our, in our analysis. First, there is no pervasive or systematic disparity in all outcomes or across all areas of the city for a particular racial group of persons. Secondly, frisks, request to exit a vehicle, and high discretion searches all showed significant disparities that remained after we controlled for a variety of things. And those disparities were, were prevalent across most divisions in the city. Gang officers, thirdly, showed less consistent disparities than non-gang officers, which perhaps suggests that they are better equipped to make distinctions between white and minority citizens, perhaps because of the way in which they interact with, with gang members on a routine basis. And then finally, for four of the seven remaining outcomes, the results were really quite mixed and showed no pattern of disparity one way or the other across the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zine?
And you analyzed eight, or 700,000 stop...
Slightly, slightly more than 800,000, actually.
And the cost to that was $700,000 for the, for the, the cost for the project?
Yeah.
Was there any recommended follow-up or was that the end of the project?
You know, one of the things that we, quite frankly, were not asked to do is to provide specific recommendations to the city. However, one of the things that, as you know, we mentioned yesterday is this idea of, of conducting an internal benchmarking analysis. This was one of the proposed methodologies that we'd suggested to the city that the city did not ask us to go forward on. We think because the, the city believed at the time that that analysis would be available to it through its Teams 2 system. And we would, we would encourage the city to, to pursue an internal benchmarking strategy that would be able to identify specific outlier officers to try to drill down to, to, if there is racially biased policing occurring, can we locate it within probably would be a small group of officers? And that type of analysis would get, would get the city there.
Would that be identified in the Teams 2 project?
It was our understanding that from ongoing discussions with some of the city officials that we've been dealing with, that the Teams 2 system would have that capability built into it. Whether that is a for-sure thing or not, I don't know.
Okay. So as far as the city's contract with Analysis, that's completed this time? There was no follow-up that was offered or requested?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. And the feeling for certain minority groups is that they would be stopped just because of the color of their skin? That they would simply be stopped, taken out of their car, searched, et cetera? Your report didn't prove that to be a fact. Is that correct?
Yeah. Well, in fact, we didn't, we didn't analyze factors that produce a stop. Our analysis was, was focused solely on what happened after a stop occurred. So we really can't speak at all to, to that baseline issue that you're addressing, that is, what is it that prompts a police officer to make a stop in the first place?
The information initially was that you couldn't tell the ethnicity, the race of the driver driving down the road? That was the, the initial statement?
Right. Part, the, the initial ride-along study that we did showed that in some significant percentage, 30 to 40% of the time, the police could not identify the race of the person before the decision was made to stop the vehicle.
And did that show a higher number at nighttime when there's no visibility?
That's correct. Yeah, those, that number went higher, went up at night and was better during the day.
Okay. I don't have any further questions, if any of my colleagues do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I was very clear in committee that I have a lot of respect for our professionals at the table, for the report. And I think they did their best with what they had, given the variables and the data that exists. But I go back to the reason why we spent $700,000 in an effort that truly, I'm trying to understand, how does it make our communities more confident? How does it build up trust between our men and women in blue and those communities who are experiencing the type of conduct that, that is alienating when it comes to working together and bringing peace to the city and stopping the killings and the murders? But I am also aware that, and I appreciate the fact that one of the dynamics that was discovered in the study is that, yes, if you look at it from a city-wide point of view, it's hard to come to a conclusion. But when you break it down to where the poverty levels exist, high dropout rates, where you find the young people who are being basically arrested and sent to prisons, when our prisons are bursting and a high school dropout rate at 53%, these are the areas in which you find the kind of inequities, imbalances that need to be addressed, which is why I believe we wanted to do this to begin with. So the conduct of gang-related or gang officers, what was that, how, how do you entitle those officers?
We, we broke it down between gang officers and then everyone else, non-gang officers.
Not that officers are gang members, just that officers who...
Worked in gang units.
Right. I want to be clear.
Thank you.
So that dynamic to me is, is, is almost too obvious. Because if you're going to be in higher-income areas where there are no gangs, you don't have familiarity with what happens in areas where there are gang members, then anyone who doesn't fit the profile of that community is suspect. So again, I'm trying to understand the, the, how we move our city forward. And bottom line is, I agree with commissioners, the balance of 700,000, we should look at buying cameras, using technology so that we can capture the conduct of the officer in the vehicle, capture the conduct of the individual being pulled over and/or arrested to protect the city legally, protect the citizens, enhance the level of trust, but do something real in terms of impacts for our committees that are being affected. So I appreciate your work. I'm not trying to play down the importance of your work. You were instructed to do X, Y, Z. You did it. My frustration is that it's hard to see how it's going to make the city better if we come to these inconclusive stages. The real hope that I find in the process is that perhaps you could advise us as to what type of forms, what type of questions, what format we can use to capture the data that talks about the biases, the prejudices, the stereotypes that exist inheriting the conduct of a person because of what they see at face value, because of suspicions and inherent, I guess for some, well, I won't say that word, but we need to find a way to make this better. So I'm going to pull back here and, and hopefully this will get us to the next level. But thank you.
Thank you.
Let me respond.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
Just briefly, the, the detailed report that we've submitted to the city provides very specific information about the areas in which there are some reasons to have concerns and other areas that should be somewhat confidence-inspiring in terms of an absence of disparities. And it's our hope that the department and that the city will review the report in more detail, learn where the potential problems are, and react by investigating and researching and taking action in order to address those specific areas where we have identified the disparity. So even though there is no global picture that can be presented, I think the real value in, in the research that we've conducted is in bringing some better understanding of where the real areas of concern are so that there is appropriate follow-up in a more, in a more specific way.
As a result of this discourse with the council and commissioners, will there be a follow-up study or a conclude, I mean, the document that was presented, is that it? Is that, that's the product? Is there any more in your contract?
No, this is what we have been asked to do, is up to the point of producing the results of the research.
Okay. So the ability to come forward with recommendations on how we capture data that gives us a true sense of, of how we improve our process is out of the picture unless we pay you more money? Hate to be so crass.
Well, I, I think it's clear, the, the information that we think would be more informative, but all I'm suggesting is that the, a more detailed look at the results of the study will guide policymakers and guide the police in understanding areas where further work needs to be done rather than being uninformed as to which areas are the areas of the most concern.
So I'll take that as a cue that the council could put forth directives that allows us to extrapolate what you produce to create formats and variables and capture them in verbiage that allows us to be a little bit more succinct in, in how we look at behavioral patterns of our officers.
And Mr. Reyes, Mr. Chalif is here from the department. Maybe he could respond as to the next steps from the department, and then we'll acknowledge Mr. Zine.
We presently have, I believe, either be right before the council or soon to be before the council, RFP for the cameras in the car, which is the next step to see what's actually happening out there. And we're exploring the capacity of Teams 2 to do some of the analysis that the doctor has, has recommended. So we are following up on this and looking at if there are areas that appear to be problem areas, either auditing or doing other activity to explore those areas.
Mr. Chalif, I know I'm going over my time, but I just think it's important to understand...
Excuse me.
Those types of, of questions and, and data sets that we need to get to, is that going to come from the commission, from your role and function, or is that something that should be expected from the council working with you? I mean, I'm trying to understand.
Well, obviously, the department always works with the council, but I think we are well aware of what the problems are and we're going forth. We report to your committee and the council on a regular basis. If you feel we're not adequately approaching the issue, you can certainly instruct us. But I think we understand that if, if any kind of inappropriate activity occurs, that it's our job to find out and correct it. So we, we understand the problems.
I look forward to working with you, sir.
Thank you. Me too. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Labange, followed by Mr. Zine.
Thank you very much. I just want to question, this, do you have a printout of this report here, right here? Can we, I don't know if other council members got it, but sometimes we get a printout. If there's a printout, that'd be helpful.
Of the presentation?
Yeah, the presentation, to look at that particular issue there. How did you find, you're from the east?
University of South Carolina.
South Carolina?
Yes, sir.
And the gentleman to the left is?
I'm with Analysis Group as well, as Dr. Becker.
Right. Well, how do you find Los Angeles in, in, because I, have you looked at other police agencies throughout the country?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Explain your experience. Hold my time, please.
Okay. And that's a good question.
How open Los Angeles was? How open this was? What did you see? Was it a, that experience, if you could?
Well, the, the experience in conducting this research and analysis here in the city was different than in other places that I've done, that I've worked with in the sense that it is most typical that a police department will work closely with the researchers at the beginning of the, of the research to set up the questions that needed to be asked and answered, and then that the police department would be a, sort of an active consumer and, and participant in, in the process as it goes along. And that wasn't the case here. And that, that is certainly different than elsewhere that I've worked and, and done this sort of research.
And the case was that it was more open all the way through, or?
No, actually, we, we had very little contact with the Los Angeles Police Department from the beginning through the end of this process.
Which helped you, you think, as a, in doing it?
No, it just, I think, I, I, it's always better to have the, the client involved, if you will, as the process goes along.
Is that, now Jerry, why don't you explain that to me? Because I...
I'm somewhat surprised because I know that we were involved in, maybe not directly with them, but certainly with the city in who got hired, how they, which proceed, which, which method, which of the methods that they've described used to analyze it. We provided the 800,000 pieces of data. We're collecting the data, and I've been told by other people in the field that we have the most comprehensive and cleanest data in the sense of what we've collected. Most of what, I think their direct communication was with the CLA's office. And so it wasn't that we weren't cooperating, it's just that CLA was the point person and not...
But also, I kind of liked that in the sense, but I understand how you spend the other police departments, but I kind of like it where it's just the administrative office, or in this case, the legislative office, looking at it. If, not that Mr. Chalif or anyone in his wing would try to skew something, but having a kind of a, and I think Sharon's here from the CLA's office, but to, and I don't know who handled it from the CLA, Lynn, did you handle this from the CLA's office?
Not yet.
On, on, just kind of a pure look, you stand by this report?
Sure.
Right. But I, I just think the process, I mean, I didn't mean to make this question kind of go...
The, the CLA's office point person was Barb Garrett.
Who's at Modern Power.
Working for Ron Deaton.
Right.
And as you all know, Barb, she made, she made sure that everything that they needed, they got.
Right. Okay, good. But I, I think it's okay that it was, I, I kind of liked what Jerry said as opposed to, well, we got right in with LAPD and we, you know, LAPD showed us everything. And so I felt it was kind of pure, it's kind of like just through the windshield, you saw what, as opposed to the other way. But you answered my question, and I hope it stands to help this particular report. The only other question, should there be more civilian contact with, if you go to a police station, and you've been into our police stations, and there's a, a box of multiple... multiple, in multiple languages, forms to either commend or not to, or to complain about the service of a Los Angeles police officer? You looked at those as well. Civilian act in that, because I'm thinking of a police station, when you walk in, you see police officers, and then you see the forms, and should there be some civilian there that says, "Well, I could help you if you need help in that," and I don't know how many complaints we get, just a question, if you could answer that gut level? Boom, 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 all four people answer that question, if you would. More civilians in the role of taking complaints that ultimately goes to the police department?
Right. I think the, the process needs to be open and-
Yeah, I know.
And transparent, and, and set up in a way that citizens don't feel intimidated to make a complaint. And whether, whether a civilian takes the complaint or a police officer takes the complaint, I think the, I think that is of lesser importance than the process itself and the, and the confidence that the citizenry has in it.
And any different answer on that, feel the same, right there?
Yeah, I think that's generally the reaction that I would have, is that you wanna just make sure that you give the most ample opportunity for the citizens to express those viewpoints.
Thank you. Madam President, my time has expired. I thank you for the question. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zine.
Couple follow-up questions. Access the department and the staff and the facilities, did you have open access and cooperation? I mean, it's understood you work through the CLA's office, but was the department cooperative? When you wanted to do the ride-alongs, were they cooperative in assisting with those?
Absolutely.
Yes, we definitely got the information that we asked for when it was available and had a very cooperative relationship. It was a little bit more indirect than what we've experienced in other, in other projects, but that, the fact that the process was more complicated did not leave us unable to conduct the work that we, in a way that we felt would be appropriate.
If I could add something, the reason I think the process ended up being the way it was, was the consent decree, which is the principles are the council and the mayor, not the department. So, we, in, in working in this section, we went through the procedure of the consent decree, which was everything went through the council, CLA's office, and the mayor's office.
And the aspect has been in the press about the warrior mentality of police officers during the traffic stops, during the, the gang officers making their stops. Did you observe that as a survival mentality when they're dealing with the gang members in some of the violent areas of the city where we have a greater number of homicides? Did you, I understand, yesterday we discussed the gang officers versus seniority of the officers in patrol, greater seniority in gang officers, maybe more sensitivity, this issue about the warrior mentality versus the mentality of surviving when you're dealing with the violent crimes in various parts of the city, did that play a role into any identifying factors?
It didn't play a role in our analysis for this particular study that we're reported on. However, in the ride-alongs that I conducted as part of the ride-along study that we referenced, I mean, there's certainly a, a deep concern on the part of the officers that I observed about their own safety. And they, they adopt a very tactical approach when they deal, when they deal with people in a way that is, you know, perhaps uniquely LAPD. And it, and it, you know, what the history of that is and, you know, why that is, I'm not sure, but it is, it is something that, you know, as a former police officer who's worked in a number of other departments on the East Coast, I found, I found their approach interesting and different than, than what I'm accustomed to.
A little more tactical, because I know on the East Coast, I've been to some places on the East Coast and the Midwest, when you stop on for a traffic violation, you sit in the car and you invite them to sit in your car with you and you write the traffic citation on the front seat of the car.
Yeah.
They do that in South Dakota, which I was amazed, that's their policy.
I'm actually amazed at that, too.
Yeah, that's what they do, and it seems to work well for them, but obviously in Los Angeles, it wouldn't be too well received.
Right, so, you know, it's very, it's obviously a very, they're trained to think tactically and to, to respond and to contact citizens in a way that is what they believe to be tactically sound and to provide a safe outcome for them and everyone's involved. And it's, it's like I said, it's uniquely LAPD, I think.
And you have previous law enforcement experience?
I do.
And Dr. Becker?
Police experience? No.
Okay. And I know Jerry has, expressing their side of the fence, being an attorney. So, when I, when I look at, for example, Councilman Labange's question, when you go into a police station to make a complaint or to give accommodation to an officer, you go into a police station, you'd expect to see police officers there, not necessarily civilians. And if you want to complain or you want to commend, the person who would be receiving that would, I would assume, be the, an individual in uniform versus someone sitting on the side, you know, can I assist you, like an ombudsman? Have you experienced any of that when, when the issue comes up about the perception when they go into the station, the uniformed officer, the desk officer versus civilian?
Again, I think, you know, I think the, the key is that, is that the citizenry trusts the process and that it's, that it's open and, and that their complaints will be heard and acted upon. To me, it's, it's, it's not as important whether that's a civilian or a police officer taking the complaints, along, it's much more about the, the trust and the, and the process between the police department and the, and the community that it polices.
And also to respond to Councilmember Reyes' concern regarding some of the social issues when it comes to people get involved in violence and get arrested and go to prison, et cetera, the officer's role in serving many years in law enforcement, if society fails, it seems that it falls on the backs of the law enforcement agency to try and identify those individuals. You may have heard in the news lately, we've had some murders that have taken place, people walking home from school, some gang activity where it's resulted in innocent people getting murdered. The officer's role in that is obviously to protect the safety of the public, but the social ills of our society, I don't blame the police officers for that. I don't think that while those issues concern poverty, et cetera, it's not the officer's fault that people drop out of high school, that people get involved in illegal activity, they're there to try and save us, the ones who want to live in a peaceful environment, from those that unfortunately get involved in negative activities and find victims. And then the victims are the ones who end up being the victims on the crime reports. Jerry, did you wanna come and respond?
No, thank you.
Okay. Anyway, I thought the report was well-prepared. I think it answers a lot of questions. Once Team Two gets up, maybe that'll resolve some of the other issues and concerns and some of the misconceptions, but I think that with the department's size and the responsibilities that they have, they're overstretched, and I'm hearing more and more that they don't have enough resources to handle the job that they have to do to protect all of Los Angeles. So, I want to thank you all for the yesterday's presentation, also the presentation today. And if you can have those passed out to, to my colleagues, I think that'll be good information for all of us. Again, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Colleagues, that item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. Before we take our next item, I'd like to introduce Rodolfo Davis Asuna, who is the mayor of Loretto, Baja, California. Is the mayor still here? Let's give him a great round of applause. Welcome to Los Angeles. Welcome to Los Angeles. Thank you. I've been asked by our president to ask if we go next with item number 59. Mr. Garcetti, I think we talked about having public speaking first, public speakers first. I'd like to call the following three speakers, Jeffrey Jacober, followed by Ron Gastelum, followed by Liza White. Mr. Jacober.
My name's Jeff Jacober. I'm on the Executive Committee of the Mid-City West Community Council. We understand the purpose of this proposal is in large part to reduce the public's perception that city hall politics is simply an insider's game. And so, we have a problem with the process in which the Chamber of Commerce can drop something off at City Hall on Friday and have City Council act on it on Tuesday. That just seems like you're doing something that's in, in conflict with the aim of the, of the proposal. And that's not to say anything against the Chamber or the League of Women Voters, they're both very worthy organizations, it's just the process is troubling to us and we do not understand why it needs to go on this November's ballot and not a later ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gasson.
Good morning. Well, I'm here today on behalf of the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce. I'll be joined with Liza White, representing the League of Women Voters, to petition the City Council to refer proposed city charter and municipal code amendments on elections and campaign finance reforms to the city attorney for review and then timely action by the City Council to place these amendments on the November 2006 city ballot. I will address the process questions at the end of my remarks. A copy of the proposed amendments and comparison to existing law has been provided to the council as well as a brief summary. Let me say, in a democracy, it is always timely to review and discuss ethics, elections, and the rules we adopt to ensure fairness and effectiveness of our governmental institutions. We're here today not to complain. We are encouraged by the progress our city government is making on many fronts, and our sense of public opinion is that the public agrees. We're here today because as a close observer of the city government, we see definite areas where reforms can be made in the charter and the municipal code to improve the efficiency, transparency, and competency of our city government. I'm prepared to briefly discuss each of the proposed reforms as listed in the summary. However, in addition to the merits of each proposal, let me say we urge that you consider the following reasons in support of our petition. The body of city laws and policies on ethics, elections, campaign finance, lobbying, and voter information should never be viewed as static or fixed. Regular review and amendment is healthy and contributes to public confidence and involvement in city governance. The issues that our city officials have to deal with are complex and require not only diligence but special expertise. Term limits are not a punishment or a reward for elected officials. They affect the quality of our city government and should be carefully reviewed and set to achieve clear policy objectives.
Mr. Gasson, we'll give you a little, some more time, because this is your presentation and what you've put before us, so please continue.
Thank you very much. I will be brief. In our opinion, two terms for City Council members is too short. We have lost and will continue to lose highly qualified City Council members. It is self-defeating to mandate such high turnover at the expense of real progress. A third term will ensure full opportunity for new members to learn the issues and work effectively with fellow council members and to develop the necessary expertise and leadership skills required to help resolve the most difficult problems facing our city. We respectfully urge and request that the City Council approve moving these proposed amendments forward in the process, which we understand is a referral to the city attorney. This is a technical area of the law. We need the input of the city attorney. We were at the City Ethics Commission earlier today, asking for their input. We've asked them to post these proposed amendments on their website, we'll put it on our website. We will hold public forums. We're looking forward to talking to neighborhood councils. We think there is ample time between now and the election to have this public discussion. We think the public deserves this discussion. We urge that you go forward, the next step to the city attorney. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ron. Liza White.
I am Liza White, President of the League of Women Voters of Los Angeles. The City Government Responsibility Lobbying Ethics Act is before you, I hope you all have copies of it. It brings three elements of reform together. The first element extends the limits on the number of terms electeds can serve, from two to three terms. This allows electeds to perform their jobs responsibly, so that potholes get filled, but also complex projects get accomplished. It is a great improvement to our system to allow those we elect to have the opportunity to focus on multi-layered, longer horizon issues. A second element of the measure strengthens the mandate of the Ethics Commission and curbs undue influence on our electeds and candidates for office. A third element creates better transparency in campaign financing, so voters can understand whose interest is being served by campaign money spent. The League asks that the City Council approve putting this measure on the ballot for voters to decide, and I very much thank you for the opportunity, for speaking to you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to again recognize Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you to members of the public who were here and were able to, to give comments today on, on this. And I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the Chamber of Commerce. I think in my five years on this council, it's the first time I've seen that particular grouping come together on something, and I know they've been in conversations with many folks in civic leadership about this package of reforms. This, this package that we have before us, and I've gone through the, the language in the communication that is before us, I think is something that is a responsible look at making sure that our government improves. We have a system of term limits that was in itself an experiment. Dick Riordan, who was the person in private capacity before he became mayor, who put that before us and who recently said that while he thinks that's a good thing for citywide officials, he believes that the council members should at least have a third term to see through a lot of the work that they can do while they're here. I take a different point of view, which is not so much from our perspective outward, but I try to begin things from constituents' perspectives inward. And I certainly, as I've shared with many people before, hardly have a week that goes by without somebody out there who's a constituent or somebody that I work with doesn't ask, you know, when is that day coming? By the way, who's my assembly member this week? Which state senator do I have? And in an era of term limits, it's a time that's divined by velocity and change, so much to the point where I think the public has become much more disempowered than they thought. I'm a fan personally of term limits as a concept, and I do believe that term limits do help not only bring in change, but at what level is really the question to ask? Is six years appropriate at the state level? Is eight years appropriate here? When we know it takes a few years really to gain the expertise to be the best advocate for the community that you can, and then as you begin projects, sometimes those projects take a decade long. This begins to move, I believe, in the right direction. But I also see this package for what it is, it's more than, than just something around term limits. It has been one of the most frustrating things as an elected official to see the public disempowered because independent expenditures don't have to disclose where their money comes from. Right now, anybody who gives less than $10,000, if you give $9,999 for an independent expenditure against somebody, for somebody in these chambers, we have no idea where that comes from. Similarly, right now, we have gifts that can come in from lobbyists, why not just take that off the table? It's a small amount, but it's very symbolic, and people believe still that that link between lobbyists and elected officials is too close. That's something we talked about in our Rules and Elections Committee, and something that can move forward as well, I believe. Our controller, Laura Chick, recently pointed out that we have companies that have actually violated ethics laws who are still able to contract with the city. That is a loophole we have to close, people are gonna have faith in government. They've actually violated ethics laws, and yet they can still come in our RFPs and do business with this people, the city of Los Angeles. That's unacceptable in my mind as well. If we look at compulsory ethics training, ethics laws are complexier, let's admit that, which is why it's important, not just as candidates, right now, it's compulsory for anybody who's a candidate to learn those ethics laws. We as elected officials should go through that training every single year in a mandatory way as well, so that we know that, we are reminded of those rules, and that we can move forward with that as well. Lastly, one of the other things that's in here, too, that having lobbyists sit on boards and commissions, I think we have talked about that ad nauseam around here. Let's finally take the action to make sure that that link is severed. We can find great people for our boards and our commissions out there without having to take people who also do business with the city of Los Angeles. It's too close, it's kind of pernicious in many ways, and I think we can find people and accept that they're lobbyists and say, "You do that job, or if you're not a lobbyist, you can serve on boards and commissions." And I'm sorry, lastly, one other thing, too. It's been a beef of mine for a long time, that there are a lot of people who lobby us who don't register as lobbyists. I think it's been always this fine line between you have some people who call themselves lawyers and they're not lobbyists, other people who are land use advocates, but they're not lobbyists. Let's make that clear. People who come to us and ask for something from City Council and are paid to do so in any capacity should be lobbyists. And we have had, I think, too high of a threshold, and this also addresses that as well. All in all, this is an extremely strong package. There are, I think, probably a tweak or two in here, I'd like to state for the record, it's not in the formal language, but in the packet that was given to us from the League of Women Voters and the Chamber of Commerce, on proposed reform of limiting council members to three, four-year terms in office, proposed reform, it says, "Further consideration of limiting the city attorney and/or controller to three, four-year terms may well be warranted." Others have talked about citywides. I'd like to, for our sake, strike that piece and say, "Let's, let's bite off one piece right now." Similar to our federal government, where we have a president limited to two terms in office, members of Congress can obviously serve longer. I think it's appropriate for us to look at this body first. You all know how much I love this body. I set a simple goal when I became- I set a simple goal when I became President to make this body one that we all loved internally, but also one which people from the outside could look at and say, it was the best city council anywhere in the country. We have taken great steps in the last five years to move that direction. I've seen that in polling. People feel better about this body. They feel better about individual council members. They feel better, more importantly, about the direction of their neighborhood and about their city. In poll after poll, I've seen that. I think it is appropriate now for us, taking the advice and taking the initiative of folks out there in the community, thousands of people I know who have been asked about this, to move forward today with the option of keeping this open for the next, you know, nine or 10 days until we'd have to look at an ordinance, get some public input on that in the meantime as well, but put that before the people and say, is this package of ethical reforms something that you believe in? Is it time for us to actually close these loopholes? Is it time to call lobbyists for what they are? They're lobbyists, not a bad word, but an honest assessment of them. It's time to close these loopholes about gifts from lobbyists. It's time to close these loopholes in terms of independent expenditures, which we all talk about and agree in this horseshoe has been the biggest danger. So with that, colleagues, I would ask for your support. I'm curious to hear other people's opinions as well, and I want to thank the folks who brought this forward. There's not a lot of gain in this. There's not a lot of upshot for people asking us to reexamine what is. It's very easy just to keep business as usual and to keep things moving the way they are. But this is a conversation worth having, and I think it's a vote worth having too. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to the next speaker, Jason Lyon, the card did not get up to us for that. The guard had it, so, Mr. Lyon.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's Jason Lyon. I'm the Chair of the Governmental Affairs Committee of the Silver Lake Neighborhood Council, not here speaking on behalf of an official position of my council because there was no time for us to take action. I very much support extending city council terms to three limits, but I urge you to take no action on the report before you today. A central goal of ethics reform is to avoid the appearance of evil, and for you to rush through a report three days after you got it that benefits no one clearly but the 15 people sitting behind those desks looks bad. It looks like evil. I know it's been suggested here today that we could have a public process after it's set for the ballot, but what we know is that once something's on the ballot, money plays a huge role in the discussion, and it changes the outcome of the discussion, or it certainly can. So I would urge you to wait. It can go on the spring ballot, I assume. We're also talking about other very serious political reforms in terms of, I don't know what we're calling clean money now, but campaign finance reform. I think we can deliver a package to the people that says, here's a whole menu of options that can change and improve government in Los Angeles, which ones work for you and which don't. But to rush through the one measure that only benefits this body doesn't look good, and it doesn't include any of the people of Los Angeles, which is our goal. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call on Mr. Padilla, followed by Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'll be brief. I know there's others who've been put a lot more time and energy into this item than I have. I do rise to support of the motion because I think it's a good policy to pursue. And ultimately, this term limits will not be modified or redone in Los Angeles without a vote of the people, and so this is just the first step. But hearing loudly and clearly from the public speakers here, the lack of lengthy and multiple community hearings or committee hearings on this item, I'd just say if we move forward with this today, and I will be a yes vote, that whether it's council members more involved or the chamber or the League of Women Voters, between today and the time this comes back to us in the form of an ordinance, there ought to be some more community hearings or some public hearings for the sake of gathering input. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. It's nice to see that the LA Chamber and also the League of Women Voters and many other thoughtful organizations have come together and put a lot of time and energy into this to ask us that we participate in putting this before the voters. I agree that we should. One of the things from this side of the elected table is that I've been involved in term limits as a legislator, having got, was elected in 1996 for two years, and then in 1998 for two more years, and the year 2000 for two more years. It was when I became a senior member, believe it or not, at my age as senior, I was able to be the Chairman of the Budget Committee in a very important position. At that year was the year in which we, for the first time, were budgeting across the $100 billion mark. And when I was asked to leave the Budget chairmanship because I was termed out, then that was handed over to a freshman legislator. That freshman legislator, probably today, is a better legislator than I was when I was a senior. But I can tell you, that freshman legislator was very much having to depend more and more on staff and other individuals, non-elected individuals, to help her make decisions. I know that because she's a friend of mine. I know her very well, and she's very capable. But the fact that she was a freshman did not allow her the opportunity to make those seasoned decisions that she should or could have made, that she does now make today as a senior legislator today. The reason why I share that with you is because the voters elect us. The voters expect the best from us. The voters expect us to be effective. The voters expect us to be bringing resources to their communities, to our districts. And as time goes on, I think that we get better at that. We're not as good on our first day as we are on our 30th. We're not as good on our 30th day of being elected official as we are in our third year and our fifth year. Here on the City Council, we represent 250,000 constituents. We represent the second-largest city in the country. We are the elected legislative body. Like it or not, the budget of the City of Los Angeles has to go through the scrutiny of the meetings and the City Council. We do that in conjunction with the administrative branch, which is the mayor. But it is this body, elected by districts, all 15 of us, that have to have a threshold vote in order to get that budget passed. I give you that as another example. Once again, the second-largest city budget in the country. I think it's incumbent upon us to give the opportunity for the argument to be made that the people of Los Angeles should be able to decide whether or not eight years is long enough or too long, or 12 years is long enough for us to be good, effective legislators in the City of Los Angeles. I would also like to add, if you don't mind, Madam President, hopefully it'll take me a few seconds to get this point across. In this language, in this reform language, we do in fact increase from one year to two years for people to be able to employ themselves and to be able to come back and work with the City of Los Angeles outside of being a bureaucrat. And I think that that two years, going from one year to two years, should definitely apply to ex-council members, council members at our level. We accept that responsibility, and I think that, I hope that my colleagues would accept that that two years would be a proper amount of time. But for the other individuals within the city, they don't have the kind of flexibility, the knowing of when they're going to exit their responsibilities. These other people, most of them are at-will employees. We could terminate them at any given moment, and for them to be precluded for two years beyond one year, I think would be egregious. So I'd like to offer that this move forward with the two years applied to the elected officials, the elected legislators, the council members, and not to the other bureaucrats within the city, that they remain at one year.
Thank you. Mr. Labonde, followed by Mr. Reyes.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank Ms. White from the League of Women Voters and the League of Women Voters who are down here, my neighbor, Rosemary Fitzpatrick, who's still living, our librarian from John Marshall High, was a great member of the League of Women Voters, and I think they're a great organization that just looks at what's good for the city. Many, many things they have done in the past. And, Mr. Gaslim, I thank you for your leadership for the Chamber of Commerce to come over and voice that here. You know, time runs real fast, and I think it's real important that we put this before the voters to let them decide whether they want it. This great city hall has a Tom Bradley Tower, who served for many years. Tom Bradley, when he was elected in 1973, said, "In 18 months, I'm going to have rapid transit in Los Angeles." When it was finally dedicated, John Farrar, who this building, this chamber was named for, he spoke at that event as President of City Council, and he said, Madam Clerk, he said, "Tom, you were right about one thing, 18." It took 18 years for the subway to be built from Union Station down to the first leg of Hill Street. And we, as representatives, have a lot of hard work, and we love our jobs. I don't want to be a lobbyist. I don't want anything but to do but to help the City of Los Angeles. So if the people of Los Angeles say, "Yes, council members, you could serve four more terms," that will mean four more years of hard, focused dedication on helping Los Angeles, which is so important. And it does take time to accomplish goals. I use that example about the subway. And there will be time for community organizations to voice their concerns, and that's the process. But right now, I think it's real important that we put this on the ballot to let the voters of Los Angeles decide whether it's important or not to extend term limits at this time. I thank you, Madam President, and all who have been involved in this issue here, which is so important to include the ethics reform as we look to this as a potential possibility to serve the people of Los Angeles better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonde. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. There was a quote I read somewhere where, "Why do you want to cling on to your job?" And I don't believe it's clinging. I believe it's a sense of commitment that we've all shown, given our work, our efforts in our district. If I go back, when I was working within Councilmember Mike Hernandez, the passing of the goal line was a concept. 10 years later, we're actually having the stations, the rail line, and the skeleton of a whole new approach in dealing with how you build housing near a rail station, how you build parks near the housing, near the rail station. These are about systems. And in an area as complicated, as diverse as this region, our ability to develop relationships with other jurisdictions, our state officials, our county officials, our federal officials, when we talk about the need for water in this great city, what will happen when we talk about 15, 20 years from now? We anticipate population growth that is two times the City of Chicago coming into the city. Where will they live? Where will the water come from? These are very real infrastructure issues. Now, as council members, we're driving the legislative portion of this, and how we control, how we influence, how we absorb these issues, how we create consensus with our community stakeholders, and that takes time. So as a person who has been in the trenches since 1991, in elected office, in the city family since 1988, watching these types of changes and seeing these projects come to fruition from concept to implementation takes far more than those eight years. I believe the 12 years can provide the kind of quality service that this city deserves, indeed this region. So I thank those who are stepping up and saying, "Let's extend this term limit." Let's understand that as a pivotal point in our world economy, the City of LA is poised to take this to a whole other level. I believe those who are in council today, through circumstance, through luck, through hard work, a good number of us have had the experience of being in the staff level, working in the city family, to be able to bring forth a perspective that does take time, and I would hate to see the loss, the wealth of that knowledge, go because of a technicality. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. Just, I wanted to formalize what Mr. Padilla suggested and ask if the League of Women Voters might work with us to do at least one, if not two. We'll see what we can do in the time. Community forums on this as well, I think it would be a good thing. I do want to point out on a number of these things, the public hearings that we've had of late, which gives me, we've had public hearings here in councils as well as in committee in terms of prohibiting campaign contributions from registered city lobbyists. We've been discussing that, I believe, for two and a half years, and we've had really good vigorous public comment on that. I think people have been pretty clear on that. Prohibiting gifts from registered city lobbyists is new. I don't believe we have a council file that's addressing that. Prohibiting city lobbyists from sitting on city boards and commissions, I do believe we've been, I know we have a council file on that, we've been discussing that. Looking at the lobbyist threshold is something we've absolutely discussed here a number of times and had public hearings on. This particular manifestation of it, we haven't, which is why I think it'll suit us well to have that. Requiring city contractors to certify that they will comply with the city's lobbying laws, we have not as well. That's something we can add. The three terms, term limits, we've discussed not only in 2002 when we had vigorous debate around here, but certainly it's been something that's been brought up three times in my time here in City Council. The compulsory ethics training for all city elected officials has come up when we've talked about the ethics training. The prohibition of city officials from lobbying for two years is new. I think that'll be good. Requiring all communication supporting or opposing a candidate, I forgot to address this when we first talked, those robo-calls everybody gets, those automatic phone calls we all get at our homes, those recordings, would now have to say, "Paid for, by," which I think is a really important disclosure. We get calls from Al Gore, from Bill Clinton, from Dick Riordan, from all these people. You start talking to them because you think they're actually calling you at first, but we have no idea who's actually paying for those calls, and I think it would be very strong to include this. And we've talked a lot around here in public hearings about independent expenditures and lowering that threshold as well for disclosure of those donations. So I would formally move that we do that and have that. I hope we can get a second on that as well, and that would, thank you, Mr. Cardenas, and as well as Mr. Cardenas' change on that and the striking of any consideration right now of citywide officials as well, which was on the addendum to our communication here. And with that, I think we're in very good shape. This is not something coming out of the blue. This is something that has consumed us, I think, in many ways, as we've struggled with ethics reform, and we always look at doing this through ordinance. I think taking this to the people, there will be no ambiguity in terms of what people think about these ethics reforms. Sometimes we've struggled and we've made the perfect, the enemy of the good, and I think that this is not only a good package, it's a very good package, and one that can strengthen the accountability, strengthen the openness, and strengthen the democracy that we embody around this horseshoe. I also think it's something that returns power to the community if that's something that people vote for. And again, we're not saying you have to do this. We're saying, you assess it. We trust you, the voters, to make that final decision, so I ask for your I-vote.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Mr. Labonde, do you have a?
You piqued my interest when you went through all the lists there, because there's one thing that I always thought we should do, and I don't know, I discussed this with the Ethics Director, that the requirement is, is when we run for office, we get a briefing. We get a briefing with our treasurer. I would just like to extend that, that it would be a briefing with, if there's a professional fundraising organization, that they get a briefing and that the campaign consultant or the designee by the candidate of the campaign get a briefing, because I want to make sure everybody hears all this stuff that's in there now. So everybody would be extended from what was required.
I would mandate that the annual ethics training be held for all city elected officials, appointed commissioners, and board members as well as high-level employees. We have discussed, and if I recall, I know that we've had that debate, and we actually have a council file, we've implemented the idea that fundraisers should do that, Mr. Labonde, but since there's a lot of consultants around the country, for instance.
But the designee of the candidate, meaning, let's say if I'm a candidate and I have a fundraiser who's from New York City, I could designate some, well, or some other city, I'm not sorry. I could designate someone from my local campaign to be the principal person who would be that. You know, that way it solves.
And if the treasurer is appropriate, that's something that we're doing now. The treasurer is mandated to do that, and I think that.
But you understand my drift, so I want this to work into it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We'll work with you on that. Thank you, Mr. Labonde.
Thank you. Dion?
Yes, Madam President. Our attorney, Renee Stottle, just has some questions regarding, some clarification for the direction.
Councilmembers, I just need a little bit more clarification as we draft this ordinance and resolutions. There are a couple, one, there may be tweaking that we need to do with the language in order to ensure compliance with our city law. I also assume that, to the extent that any of the language tends to water down any existing provisions of city law, that that's not something that the council is interested in, and so we would attempt to correct that as we draft it. There are two additional, or two or three additional issues. Regarding the proposal to ban lobbyists from sitting on commissions, this would be a charter amendment to say that it's a qualification of office. If you are a lobbyist, you can't sit on a commission. The question is, as it's drafted right now, it's not clear as to whether or not, it's only the day that they're appointed that they can't be required to register as a lobbyist, or if there's some time before that that they shouldn't have been a lobbyist.
I think, perhaps the League or the Chamber can clarify that too, but it was my understanding that nobody, at a given point in time, when you become a commissioner, you can't be a lobbyist. So it would be at that day. It wouldn't be if you've been in the last five years or last couple of years. I think, obviously, there are good people who are, who happen to lobby for things, and there are commissioners who may want to lobby, but they can't do both ever at the same
there are commissioners who may want to lobby, but they can't do both ever at the same Unless there's any objection.
In that same section, councilmembers, I know this, it was not part of this proposal, but when we're looking at the qualifications for commissioners, we have experienced from our office on difficulty because of a drafting error in terms of when a commissioner has to be a registered voter and what commissions that applies to. So we'd like to be able to fix that language at this point, since we would already be operating in this particular charter section.
I don't want to speak for the entire council. That seems like a good fix and one that I certainly don't oppose, and if nobody objects to it, I think that might be appropriate to add. As long as we're going to the voters on something that requires that sort of charter change, it would be a good part of this package to strengthen it.
In terms of the contributions to independent expenditure committees, we'll work with that to make sure that it's consistent with the city council's prior positions on reporting, but I do note that this requires reporting of all contributions, which seems to be a stricter threshold than even exists at the state level, and I would assume that you would be acceptable of a threshold.
Yeah, I mean, I think the language here said $1,000 or more, $1,000 or more, and right now, you have to disclose if it's $100 or more, correct, for city races, committees?
Under the current law, in terms of contributions to independent expenditure committees.
To regular ones, to non-independent expenditures, the threshold is $100, correct?
Yes. Yes, and under state law, contributions to independent expenditures of $100 or more is reportable in the last 16 days before the election.
But not necessarily before.
Yeah, and right, the way it's written right now, it's all contributions. I assume a $100 threshold for that would be.
Yeah, I think a $100 threshold, which would be consistent with our city elections, would be fair. We just want to close that loophole of people not knowing who's really behind these things.
Other than that, councilmembers, we may need to make a few tweaking changes, or there may be a section, for example, about the lobbyists and contracting provision. Move it to a more applicable section. Other than that, I think we have sufficient instruction.
Okay, and we'll rely on you, council, when you come back, if this passes, to let us know, and I'm sure we can assess those when it comes back. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas?
I just wanted to clarify for the people watching. I want to ask the city attorney, the matters that you had us clarify for you to do work on, this is not the last time the public is going to see this. As a matter of fact, all of those changes, all of that work that you're going to do is going to become public, correct? And it's going to come before the council?
Yes, well, we will draft an ordinance, and that will be public and available for public viewing and comment.
Okay, so all I wanted to point out is that, for people to understand, that, don't think that if you didn't take notes right now or you didn't follow every single word that was said, all of that's going to be in black and white, and all of that's going to give you an opportunity with days and even weeks to look at it. Certainly, if this, if in fact this does go forward and go before the voters in November, obviously you'll have months to scrutinize it and to say publicly or privately what you like or don't like about it. I just wanted to point that out, that this is not being rushed. This is something that, this is part of the process of democracy. We're doing it before the cameras, we're doing it before our guests here, we're doing it before the people of Los Angeles, we're doing it before everyone, and it's going to come back once again with public comment and opportunities for people to say what they like or don't like about the language that they see. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, this item is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
That item's been approved. We've been asked if item number 54 could go next. Item 54, Mr. Weisert.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and before us now is an item that's related to the item we just discussed, and this one actually deals with the school district, the Los Angeles Unified School District. It's a very little-known fact, but in fact, the city of L.A. gives the LUSD the right to even exist. In our charter, we have a few sentences about the governing role of LUSD. However, it delegates a lot of that to the state of California. And as many of you know, a little over a year ago, when I was school board president, along with then-president of this council, Alex Padilla, we created a commission to examine the governance of LUSD. The impetus behind that was many people's frustration with the student achievement levels of the school district, with a need to get more accountability to the school district, and how I put it, a need to get accountability that filtered throughout the school system. If we don't have the Board of Education, the people ultimately responsible for the performance of this district accountable, we're not going to have any accountability in the district. A 30-member commission was appointed by the L.A. City Council, the Board of Education, the mayor, and other cities that serve the district. Two co-chairs were appointed by, one by myself, one by Alex Padilla. 14 members were appointed by the Los Angeles City Council members. Eight members were appointed by the members of the Board of Education. Two members were appointed by the mayor. Two members were appointed by the southeast Los Angeles cities such as South Gate, Maywood, Bell, Huntington Park. One member was appointed by the cities in the Harbor area, Carson, Lomita, and Gardena, and one member was appointed by the mayors of the San Fernando, West Hollywood, and Monterey Park. They had exhaustive meetings, over 100 hours were put into coming up with ways to propose to improve the governance structure of LUSD. They had over 25 public meetings throughout the school district, and they came out with a report that was adopted by this commission this past Thursday. This past Thursday, they adopted the report, and within that are a number of recommendations. A majority of the recommendations actually focus on items that the school district, the Board of Education itself, can implement. There were some items that needed a charter change in order for them to be implemented. When Alex Padilla and I created this commission, we committed to that commission, that we will follow through on any recommendations made by this commission, and that's what we have before us today. The commission voted quite overwhelmingly to ask for campaign finance reform. In fact, right now, the school district has little, if any, rules and regulations on how the campaigns may be run. Second, the commission voted overwhelmingly to suggest term limits for the school board members. And third, the commission asked for an increase in compensation. Let me talk a little bit about each one of these without getting too much more over my time, Chairwoman, if that's okay with you. The first is campaign finance reform. As I said, the school district has very little, if any, rules on how their campaigns are run. There are no contribution limits, very few of any disclosure requirements, and no enforcement at all. There is not an enforcement agency or entity that will look at anything that the school board members do when they're running for office and whether or not they're even complying with the very few rules they have. What we're proposing is to take the rules and regulations that apply to council members and impose them upon the school board members, with the exception of a few that are by ordinance, which I will explain as well. We have made some changes. Instead of a 500 contribution limit, we're suggesting a $1,000 contribution limit, given the enormity of the school districts that these board members run from. Each school board seat has a two-and-a-half city council seat within that school board seat. We also are not imposing expenditure limits that the city council has. The reason we're doing that is because we cannot impose a mandate of matching funds upon the school board for them to expend funds on matching funds. We cannot impose that, so we're not asking for expenditure limits. And finally, we cannot regulate board members once they're in office. We were informed by the city attorney's office that once they're running for office, they're quasi-municipal individuals in which we can regulate. Once they're elected, they are state officials, and we cannot regulate their campaign finance items. So we're not and cannot limit the lobbying issues related to the board members. We cannot or limit office holder accounts. Those are still up to the Board of Education, if they so choose, to implement those. Finally, a second, on term limits, we are suggesting a three-, four-year term limit. I think it's even a lot more relevant for a school district when we talk about infusing new ideas, new energy into education, into improving educational outcomes for our children. The last few years alone, there's been a real change throughout this country about what is reforming our educational institutions. There's more what we call managed instruction, and what it means for a teacher to teach a child in that classroom, and what types of materials are used. If we look at LUSD today, very few of these reforms that have been happening throughout the country are actually being imposed upon LUSD or talked about within LUSD. A lot of that is because we have all these governance structures that do not allow, at this time, for new ideas and reforms to be infused on this Board of Education. Combined with the types of reforms we want to do in here, term limits will allow those new ideas to go in place at LUSD, so we could implement and infuse that place with new reforms that are working throughout the country. Finally, increase in compensation. I served on the Board of Education for four and a half years, and I received $24,000 for a job that's equivalent for the demand of my time as a council member. I struggled finding a job when I should have been struggling. How do I continue to learn, educate myself, meet with parents and teachers, and improve student achievement overall? We're all fooling ourselves if we think board members can be informed on voting on everything they're asked to vote upon. We're all fooling ourselves if we think that board members can not give their full attention, given that they have the oversight of the largest public works program in the country. The Board of Education expands over $11 billion annually. We need to make sure we have people that are informed and provide the oversight role as the LUSD expands all these funds. We're suggesting today a modest, a modest increase from, actually, it's $25,000 now, it was $24,000 when I was there just a few months ago, from $25,000 to $40,000 a year. It's not a whole lot increased in terms of the responsibilities that these board members are given. We have a public works commission, and we pay $90,000 or even more dollars to provide the policy and oversight of our public works programs. I think board members, when we give them responsibility to educate our children, are just as important. So board members, I ask that we move forward with this. This goes and coincides with the many reforms and talks about governance structures that is happening both in Sacramento and the mayor's office. It does not conflict with what the mayor is talking about. In fact, in the mayor's plan, there is still a role for the Board of Education. We just ask that we implement these reforms, so we talk about how board members get there, what rules should they apply, abide by, and how long they're there. And I ask that we do this now, in November, given that the momentum is here. There's a whole focus on LUSD right now. It's hard to move this large bureaucracy and institution. We should take advantage of this window, implement these reforms. It doesn't have the immediate impact in raising student achievement, but it's going to help us in the long term to raise more accountability, transparency, and effectiveness on this Board of Education. Thank you.
Did you make an amendment? Thank you. Mr. Padilla, followed by Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President, and colleagues. Rise, not only in support of this item before us, and the majority report specifically. If it hasn't been formally moved, I'd like to move that we adopt the majority report from committee and receive and file the minority report from committee. Mr. Weisert is absolutely right. The momentum is here, the focus is here. This council has been slowly but surely considering, thinking, and deliberating education issues in Los Angeles for some time now. A lot of you were here in 2001, when we created the first education and neighborhoods committee as a standing policy committee of the city council. Why? Because those of us who ran in that cycle, and those who ran in 2003 heard a lot during the course of our campaigns, not just about politi, excuse me, potholes and stop signs, but about kids, about the state of our schools in Los Angeles. And I think it's been good that in the mayor's race in 2005, most mayoral candidates were very vocal on education issues and had proposals and ideas as to how to improve education. Here we are in 2006. There is the Governance Commission that Jose and I helped start, at least the concept of it, and it's been deliberating for a year, and they're in the process of transmitting to us their final report. Our mayor is clearly talking a lot about education in the state of public schools in Los Angeles, and there is significant legislation in Sacramento, at the state Capitol, with his proposal as to what to do. While the specific role or existence of the school, the school board may be called into question, I think most people will tell you, including the mayor, that there will be a school board at the end of all this process. And if there's going to be a school board, then how do we make sure that they have as effective a role as possible? A lot of, the greater education conversation is pretty broad. They're talking about decentralization issues, they're talking about the role of the board, the role of the superintendent, the role of city officials, not just the mayor of Los Angeles, but others. But as we await this final report from the commission, one thing is very clear, that if there's going to be a board that continues to exist, an elected board that continues to exist, there are some things that are non-controversial that our commission recommended very, very strongly. The term limit issue, which I know on the city council, we're making an effort to move from two, four-year terms to three, four-year terms, to align ourselves with accounting supervisors, who have three, four-year terms as their limit, and to bring the school board into alignment as well. That's number one. Number two, the contribution limit, a no-brainer. As we've been discussing, the, whether it's the clean money, the public financing of campaigns, et cetera, to think that none of those rules apply at the school district for school board candidates and school board members with their budget of $7 billion plus, with the construction budget of $19.5 billion, we know full well that there's a lot of lobbying going on over there, and to apply rules that have worked for Los Angeles to the school district should be relatively straightforward and, I think, appropriate with that contribution limit, et cetera. So we know we're taking the first step today in asking this council to vote, to ask the city attorney to draft an ordinance that would implement what we've called for via the motion, and then there'll be a subsequent vote when the ordinance comes back to actually put it on the ballot. So thank you for your consideration, and thank you, Mr. Weisert.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Mr. Cardenas is our next speaker.
Thank you very much. Here we go again, talking about a very, very important matter. We're looking at board members that are involved in the second-largest district in the country, over 720,000 students and families, and yet they're only allowed to get paid no more than $2,000 a month. That's the point I want to focus on. As Councilmember Weisert pointed out, he was subjected to having to read through material, he was subjected to having to adhere to his sworn responsibilities, yet on a part-time basis. And he was responsible for wading through inches and inches and inches of documentation just in one day's vote. I think that kind of dedication is something that we should allow those individuals and the voters to decide whether or not those individuals should be compensated on a full-time basis. The only difference in this motion that I see before us is that the report shows $90,000 to $100,000, which was tying their compensation, potential compensation, to that of a high school principal. That might be something maybe that the voters might balk at, or it might get them to focus on that point rather than looking at the entire package. I was constantly thinking about this over the last few weeks, and I think that somewhere in about the $78,000 range would be a proper compensation for someone who's going to dedicate themselves beyond 60 hours a week. And I think, Councilmember Weisert, you would agree that this particular responsibility, this job, does require beyond 40 hours a week, right? It's the kind of job that is not part-time, and it is the kind of job that is beyond a nine-to-five. You're talking about appearing at elementary schools, middle schools, and even official meetings on the weekends sometimes out in the community, apart from the official meetings during the week, and working beyond nine-to-five as well. So what I'd like to propose is that we move forward with this, but that the compensation factor, instead of being $40,000 as proposed by Councilmember Weisert, if we could have it at $78,000, which is in the, if you look at the chart of compensation for teachers, it's on the higher end for compensation of teachers. It's not as high as the compensation for, say, a high school principal, as the report finds, but I think it's the kind of compensation where the individual can actually dedicate themselves full-time to the responsibility of being a well-informed voter of the, an elected official of the school board here in Los Angeles. So that I would like to propose either as an amendment. We can either accept it as an amendment or vote on it separately to compensate them at $78,000, not $40,000.
Is there a second to that?
Is there a second to that?
Mr. Wesson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President and members. I rise just to make a suggestion or two. I would ask Mr. Weisar to carefully think of the timing of this issue and when it should be placed on the ballot. The -- you know, we don't want it to be confusing. There's talk of something from Sacramento possibly, and this, and what we just voted on, so I think that that should be taken into consideration. But where it relates to the salary, I think that we are ill-equipped to determine what that salary should be, that there are arguments on all sides of the issue. But to create a compensation evaluation committee that would determine what that salary would be, given the full-time nature of the job, and they would make -- I mean, so that's something that you might want to consider that could elevate comfort level where it relates to the compensation. I think $40,000 is really not enough for the work that they do, but the -- a panel constructed of the right people, I think, would determine what is fair and equitable for what has to be one of the most difficult elected positions. So I want to support that, and I just think that that's something that you may want to give some consideration to, takes it away from us and gives it to this evaluation panel or committee.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard on this? If not, can I --
Just real --
Okay, Mr. Labonge, next, and then we're going to invite the city attorney to clarify something.
Just to follow up what Mr. Wesson said, if it was someone from the legal women voters, someone from the PTSA, from the various regions of the city, and let them do that, may be a great suggestion, Mr. Wesson. So I second your thought, whether -- however it gets constructed.
Thank you. We'll have a second. Mr. Weisar?
Thank you very much, and I think that's a great idea, Mr. Wesson, if we could create a compensation committee, and it would make even more sense, given that the mayor's bill in Sacramento will be voted upon in late August, I believe, and at that time, we'll know more specifically what rules and responsibilities, and within this large framework, what role the board will play. So at that time, the compensation committee could actually take that up and say, you know, this is what it's going to take. I personally would love to see a Board of Education that focuses more on student achievement, what's happening inside the classroom, how do we support the teacher and the school site. As a school board member, I can tell you, I spend 80% of my time in everything but that, given the school construction program, modernization program, other things. But whatever happens in August, I think would be better set if we do a compensation committee. And if I could -- would the city attorney be amenable to that? If we could give direction today on the compensation that doesn't set a salary, but you could come back to us with some language on what that compensation committee can look like and how we could put that in the charter, perhaps. Is that possible? Can we -- can I have you give an official yes into the microphone if that's your answer?
We have to be --
You have to be.
We can certainly work with you, so that's a yes. We would like a little more direction on the persons who will comprise the evaluation committee, however. If you'd like to discuss that today, or we can work with you on that as well.
Can we work -- I don't think we'll come up with something today, but I'd love to work with you and all other interested council members to work with you on what the compensation committee would look like. Okay.
Okay.
Anything else you need clarification on?
I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. First of all, this ballot measure will be to change the charter, not to establish an ordinance, and the reason for that is that the California Constitution allows charter cities to regulate certain components of school board members' elections and terms of office only through charter. So all of these proposed changes will go into the charter. We're proposing to put them into Article 8, which relates to other school board issues, but that was one clarification I wanted to make. And then also to elaborate on something that you said, council member, we will not be including certain provisions that apply to council members, and those are the expenditure limits and all other provisions that relate to expenditure limitations. In addition, we did need some clarification on one issue, and that is the period of declaration of candidacy, because for council members, there's an 18-month pre-election fundraising window, but for citywide offices, it's 24 months. And by your contribution limits, you've chosen the citywide contribution limit, so we need some clarification, whether you want 18-month fundraising window or 24-month window.
I'll move 18.
18? Okay. Move for 18. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Weisar, second.
Okay. And there are a few other provisions that we've discussed with your office that may not be carried over, and that's because of the unique nature of a school board and the strong interests of the parents and the teachers. And those include aggregate contribution limits and certain other member disclosures or member communications. But when we do our report, what we can do is give you a list of all of those items that are currently applicable to council members that won't be carried over.
Thank you.
And then lastly, it's my understanding that although you are considering putting a ballot amendment on that will change certain regulations currently applicable to council members, that you would like us to draft the LAUSD reforms using the current language in case the reform package advocated by the League of Women Voters doesn't pass, so there won't be any disparity in the law. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Well, let me ask for clarification on the what element specifically, other than the number of terms, or is that the only thing that you --
Well, for example, one of the provisions that may be carried over is 49-726 of the Los Angeles Municipal Code that deals with payments for independent expenditures and non-behested member communications. I believe that part of the league proposal will be to amend that section, but my understanding is that I'm to draft a charter change for LAUSD reform that mirrors the current Municipal Code section.
Okay. Well, I mean, we could always amend it when it comes back.
Yeah.
Correct.
To put it on the ballot itself.
Correct.
Because I think that's something that we should think through at least a little bit more. Do we want to put the measure on the ballot that proposes to implement it the way our current law is at the city, even though we're seeking to achieve, to change it? Or should we draft to apply to LAUSD in a way that we're trying to get to for the city?
Correct. And one thing you might want to keep in mind is, because the LAUSD reforms have to be done through charter, which is difficult to change, you may actually want to consider changing it to reflect what you think may be a change in the future to the Municipal Code. Just an idea, but I'll follow whatever direction I'm given.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you to the city attorney's office that's been very helpful to come up to this point. I also just want to end by saying that a lot of folks say that governance at LAUSD is not going to -- or changing governance at LAUSD is not going to improve student achievement, but like I started this conversation, yes, it's not going to have the immediate impact, but in the long term, we'll see the payoffs. We need to create an environment by which you have more accountability, transparency, and effectiveness, and this is going toward that path. And these changes are long overdue. It's almost as if we created this district and never followed up on what changes we needed to make to keep it up with the changes that other public jurisdictions were imposing, such as term limits, contribution and ethics reforms, and we're just bringing up to speed, at least to have that conversation, and whether voters approve with those changes or not. And finally, I want to thank the commissioners, who particularly our co-chairs, Maria Casillas and David Cunningham, who put hours and hours and hours into this discussion. We're not seeing the recommendations they have before us here today, that you could get a draft report from the Internet, but there's other great recommendations in there that are focused on that the Board of Education can implement. Hopefully, the Board of Education takes that upon itself and moves forward with these reforms that are much needed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weisar. Just a procedural matter, I'd like to move to receive and file the minority report, since my concerns have been addressed there as well. Any other members of the council wishing to be heard on this item?
[inaudible]
Excuse me, sir. We've had a -- we have a public hearing in committee on this, as per our legal requirements. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this? Madam Clerk, what do we have before us?
You have the committee report as amended, and that would be rather than the compensation stated, it would have -- there would be a compensation committee that would decide that, the compensation evaluation committee that would be designated.
Okay. Is there any objection to that? If there's no objection, it's accepted as a friendly amendment. If there's a single objection from the body, it's not. Seeing none, we'll accept that as a friendly amendment. Any other amendments?
And then there was the window that the LAUSD, the condition is would be subject to the 18-month window.
Okay. Is there any objection to accepting that as a friendly amendment from any member? Seeing none, that too will be accepted as a friendly amendment?
And that's it. That would be that committee report as amended.
Okay. We have the committee, the majority report before us as amended by the two friendly amendments. If we can please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That will move forward. Yes, Mr. Wesson?
I'd like to ask for reconsideration on item 55. It'll only -- it'll be brief. We need to do a quick amendment.
Okay. If there's no objection, let's open the roll and reconsideration. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is back before us. Mr. Wesson?
Okay. What I'd like to do is move to strike the findings made in the agenda description that is not consistent with the CAO report. And then if we're successful, send this item forthwith.
Okay.
And for clarification, that would be starting with making a finding that the Watts Labor Action Committee is in breach?
Yes.
Is that -- okay.
Yes.
Okay. Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard on this? If not, let's prepare the roll on this and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
And let's send that forthwith, please, if there's no objection. Okay? We have items 18 and 19 left. Is that correct?
Yes, the committee reports have been distributed to the council members.
Okay. Nobody wishes to be heard on those? Let's take those up together. Please prepare the roll on 18 and 19. Mr. Labonge, is it on 18 and 19?
No, no. It's on 14.
Okay. Hold on one second, and let's tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved.
Forthwith.
Forthwith on 18 and 19, if there's no objection, colleagues, and 14 as well, if there's no objection. Okay? Yep, we got it. Any other business? Madam Clerk?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Let's post and refer those.
Their excuses on the desk. Council President Garcetti requests to be excused Friday, July 28th, to leave at 11:15 for personal business. A motion is required.
All right. Mr. Reyes moves, and Mr. Padilla seconds. If there's no objection, that excuse is granted.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused the second, third, and fourth Wednesdays from July through December to leave at 1:00 p.m. for city business, and those meet council policy.
Okay. That excuse is granted.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused October 3rd and 4th for city business. That means council policy.
She is excused.
And Councilmember Padilla requests to be excused Tuesday, August 15th, and Friday, September 15th for personal business. A motion is required on both.
Okay. Mr. Cardenas moves. I will second that. Mr. Padilla is excused.
And that clears the desk.
All right. Any announcements, colleagues? Announcements?
Yeah, there's a great exhibit at the Miracle Mile, Ace Gallery, Dennis Hopper's photographs, and it's right there in the Miracle Mile at the old Desmond's Building, and it's at the end of the month. Ace Gallery, Dennis Hopper, artist.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Any other announcements, colleagues? Do we have any adjourning motions today? Is there anybody with adjourning motions? Yes? If I can please ask everybody in council chambers to rise for our adjourning motions. If I can ask folks who are having their conversations to take them either out of chambers right now for our adjourning motions or to hold on them while we do our adjourning Mr. Labonge.
Thank you, members. I ask we adjourn in memory of Stan Espiro, 86 years old, lived a wonderful, full life. He was a key executive to Jean Autry, who helped develop the California Angels, Los Angeles Angels, Anaheim Angels. Stan was a great executive in the radio business here at KNPC. I ask we adjourn in his memory. And, members, I also like to ask that we send condolences to the concert of India for the terrible tragedy in Mumbai last week, and also that we send to the Indonesia concert, if I could, on your behalf, Mr. President, for your signature, our condolences for the tsunami that hit Indonesia.
Absolutely. Thank you. Mr. Labonge. Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I would like to adjourn this council meeting in memory of Jermaine Sharp, who passed away Sunday, July 2nd. Jermaine was the youngest son of Dorothy Sharp, who retired from the Community Development Department last August after 23 years of city service. His passing was untimely and especially sad, as Jermaine met his death through a violent act. This passing is even sadder, as Jermaine was a young man, a devoted father with an infant son, and he was only 25 years old. His son, Ethan Hunter Lee Sharp, is one-year-old. Me join in sympathy with the Sharp family and with his mother in this time of grief, and his services will be Friday, July 21st, at 11:00 a.m. at Figaroa -- excuse me, Figaroa Church of Christ at 57th and Figaroa.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Any other adjourning motions, colleagues? Not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Reyes?
Yes, I just wanted to welcome everyone to MacArthur Park tomorrow evening for the council meeting, starting at 6:00.
That's a good reminder. We will not be meeting at 10:00 a.m., as is customary, but it'll be tomorrow night at 6:00 p.m. over at MacArthur Park. Part of our effort to bring council meetings to the community in Council District 1, and Mr. Reyes will be presiding there as our president for the evening. So with that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
You got that tape from MacArthur Park? Jimmy Webson, MacArthur Park, this is guilty.
And just as a notice, too, to folks who come for public comment, we will not be able to have our video conference technology tomorrow, so please come down to MacArthur Park if you wish to be heard. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a great --